Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Committee of the Poll for Tuesday, February 26. We meet today on the traditional territory of the Swamish Nation. We have an amended agenda in front of us. We've added a motion to close at the end. So, motion to adopt the amended agenda, moved by Councilwoman Humber, seconded by Councilwoman French, all of whom favor it. Both motion carries. Well, we have a lot of business to do this afternoon. So, without further ado, this new council's first crack at flood issues. So, I'll turn it over to you, David. And, oh, it's the David and David team. I forgot. David Roche, welcome back.
Thank you.
To talk about quantitative risk assessment for the floodplain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is David Rolston. I'm the manager of municipal infrastructure. And I have David Roche here, a hydrotechnical engineer with Curly-Liddell Associates. He was our project manager for the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan as well as completing the technical work for this quantitative risk assessment. Also have Megan Latimer, our emergency program coordinator, and of course Chris Wickham, Director of Engineering. So, today we'll be presenting on the process and outcomes of this quantitative risk assessment. This project was 100% funded through senior government grants under the National Disaster Mitigation Program. So, it hasn't cost the district any to get this excellent information. Our objective for today is to give about a 30-minute presentation and to allow 30 minutes for questions and discussion. And also just to highlight that this project is building on the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. And just to let you know, the district won another award for this, for the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. I think this is our third or fourth award that we have won under the flood.
Who's this one from?
This is from the Canadian Consulting Engineers. Is that...
That's Canadian Consulting Engineer Magazine and the Association of Consulting Engineers of Canada. David was invited to Ottawa to receive this award with us but was unable to attend. So, it's a national award.
So, you know, if the gondola didn't put us on the Integrated Flood Hazard, you're definitely going to win.
That's right.
Congratulations. That is important to acknowledge, this good work.
Well, did we get it for the plan or for the poster? No, we'll be applying for an award for the poster design. You'd have to look at the poster.
And maybe that's some context we can set as you go through your presentation is just why we're winning awards for this plan. And I believe it's because we're out in front, but I will let you sort of set that context for Council.
Okay, thank you. So, our objectives for this presentation and specific goals are that council can have a good understanding of why we're doing this quantitative risk assessment and also to understand the difference between flood hazard and flood risk in the Swamish context. And we're also, we have the objectives, we would like to inform Council of our process, of the methodology for completing this process, our project, as well as the results and what the findings are, for us to present our recommendations for next steps and measures that we can be taking to address mitigation and risk reduction, to receive Council's feedback on the plan and our recommendations. And ultimately, we're seeking endorsement from Council to finalize this plan and to implement our recommendations. So, just a quick overview of Swamish's flood hazards. We're located at the head of How Sound and at the confluence of five major river systems. So, we are in a flood-prone area. Just starting from the south, our downtown border as well as Detville is exposed to coastal flood hazard. Most of our community is exposed to flood hazard from one of our five river systems. We also have debris flow hazard areas, most notably the Chikai Fan in Bracken Dell. And there's only a couple of areas that are outside of flood, or a couple of developed neighborhoods that are outside of flood hazard areas in Swamish. So, some of the key considerations for us as a community and for this project are that nearly all of Swamish is exposed to flood hazard. And the Swamish River floodplain is a particular challenge. There is an extensive amount of development, both residential, commercial, institutional, industrial. And we're very reliant on dykes for flood protection. So, based on that, the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan recommended to upgrade beyond the provincial standard for the Swamish River Dyke. So, we were calling this the Super Dyke. It's building the dyke to a 1 in 500-year return period level as opposed to a 1 in 200-year return period, which is the provincial standard. So, that comes at a cost of $35 million, and we're expecting to complete that over the next quarter century. So, both the scale and development within the floodplain and this significant dyke investment, both merit completing quantitative risk assessment. This is going to give us some excellent knowledge to further inform our mitigation. So, this quantitative risk assessment looks at the Swamish River floodplain as well as the coastal floodplain. So, starting with the Swamish River floodplain, it's separated into two floodplain areas, north of the Mamcom River and south of the Mamcom River. They each have independent dyking systems, so that's why they're separated. There could be a flood on one without impacting the other. However, having said that, if there's an extreme flood event, both floodplains could potentially flood at the same time as well. So, the consequences of a flood, we're talking about events that can happen due to heavy rain, snow melt, just significant hydrological events. A flood could cause extensive social and economic impacts. It could result in displacing over 10,000 people, over half of the population of the community, as well as most of our commercial activities taking place within the Swamish River floodplain. So, potentially some very significant impacts. I have some difficulties here. I'm not sure what's going on there. So, flood risk management is a critical consideration for the resiliency of the community. So, that's why we're doing this project. So, the second floodplain is, or the secondary that we're looking at is the coastal floodplain. And the quantitative risk assessment also looks at that. This map here is showing a 1 in 200-year flood with 1 meter of sea level rise. So, this is projected by the year 2100 according to provincial government. And a coastal flood could displace over 5,000 residents and also cause hundreds of millions of dollars of damage. So, we'll be discussing that a little bit further. Obviously, risk management is a critical consideration for coastal flood hazard, or coastal areas. So, now I'll talk about the difference between flood hazard and flood risk. A hazard is an event that could occur and cause harm to society, infrastructure, or the environment. In our case, we're talking about the dyke breaching from the river or from the ocean and flooding the developed areas of the community. So, every hazard has a probability of occurring in any given year and a flood magnitude. So, the larger the event, the less likely it is to occur in any given year. The flood magnitude determines how high the water rises and the load or the forces that it imposes on the dyke. And ultimately, the probability of the dyke breaching is related to how high the water rises, the forces that are imposed on it, in relation to how high and how strong the dyke is. So, this is all hazard. A consequence is the specific negative outcomes that would result if the hazard occurs. So, for flood assessments, the consequences fall under two categories, economic damage and the risk of fatalities. Both of those are determined by the scale of development, so what the value of development is, how many residents are located in the floodplain, as well as the flood characteristics. So, how high does the water rise to? What area is impacted? How quickly does it occur? Those determine the economic damage and fatalities. And the other key consideration for determining the risk to loss of life is how many people are able to successfully evacuate the floodplain prior to the flood reaching them. And ultimately, risk is the product of the probability and the consequences of a hazard considering a wide range of events. So, in risk assessments, the final numbers or deliverables that we get are annual economic damage, what's the average damage that could occur in any given year, and what's the probability of a person losing their life. So, to run through a quick flood risk management example, this is, this table shows on the vertical axis, the probability of an event occurring, so ranging from unlikely at the bottom to certain at the top, and the consequences of an event ranging from minor on the left to severe on the right. So, a developed community in a floodplain with no dyke protection would be in a very high-risk scenario because the probability is certain and the consequences would be severe. But if that community built dykes, then the probability of flooding goes down. The consequences could be just as severe as in a no-dyking scenario. So, the consequences are still there. It's more of a moderate-risk scenario. But if new development is raised above the flood construction level and new growth is directed outside of the floodplain, then that reduces the consequences of a flood. So, now we're getting into a more moderate-risk scenario. And finally, with some additional emergency management measures, planning for flooding, evacuation planning, and so on, we can again reduce the consequences and move into a lower-risk scenario. So, that's the goal with risk management is to ultimately get risk as low as reasonably So, why are we doing the quantitative risk assessment? Many of the leading jurisdictions around the world, including the Netherlands, who are really leaders in this field, they're leaning towards risk-based assessments. So, why are they... First of all, a hazard-based approach is looking at the consequences of a single event. So, for instance, in British Columbia, it's a 1 in 200-year flood. Whereas a risk-based is looking at the probability and the consequences for a wide range of scenarios. So, that really helps to inform mitigation approaches. It looks at, because it is looking at the probability and consequences of these different range of events. So, risk-based approach ultimately provides information on the consequences of the flood, economic damage. So, this is a map here showing the Netherlands. Ultimately, the map shows the dollars per hectare per year of economic risk. So, green is areas where it's low risk, yellow and orange is getting into higher risk scenarios. It's an economic risk map. And it also, we can find information on the risk to loss of life. Again, this is Netherlands showing risk to loss of life for one specific dyke scenario. And you can produce a whole bunch of different maps based on different dyking assumptions and really helps to inform mitigation. Risk analysis can produce benefit-cost ratios so that tell you for every dollar that you put into mitigation, how many dollars do you get back in reduced flood damages? And ultimately helps to answer the question, how much mitigation is enough? So, making sure that you don't go beyond that point of diminishing returns in terms of further investment. Also, this supports grant applications. This is becoming a requirement for some grant applications to be able to submit some of the information we're getting on this quantitative risk assessment. Swamish is really leaning back now provincially on this. We have some of the best flood mapping as well as we're one of the few communities in DC to now have done a quantitative risk assessment. So, we're positioned excellently for future grant opportunities. Ultimately, doing quantitative risk assessment allows for a more informed and robust approach to flood mitigation. So, I'll stop here before handing it over to David just to say that quantitative risk assessments, they do involve a significant amount of uncertainty. There's a lot of assumptions that go into this necessarily. Things like how many people are able to evacuate prior to a flood and so on. And so, these results should be viewed as an indication of risk, not as numerically But having said that, I do want to say that we're using some of the best data available. We've got a qualified engineer. So, this is actually, in terms of risk assessments, we're at a very high degree of accuracy. It's just that all risk assessments are necessarily involved uncertainties. So, I'm handing it over to David.
So, my role here today is to try to walk you guys through a little bit of what we did so that by the end of this, you guys can all be quantitative risk experts and go do your own. No, because it's important to understand where these results are coming from so that we can have confidence in the process and, you know, understand maybe a bit about what the uncertainties are, but also trust that the outcomes are giving us good information about what's happening in Swamish and how we can react to that appropriately. So, I'll just quickly walk you through a bird's-eye view of what we did on this project, and I'll try not to get too technical. I've told David to kick me under the chair if I go down the rabbit hole. So, the first step that we did is we took our, the models that we had built for the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, and we had to update them to look at that range of scenarios and to look at some of the other parameters we needed to look at things like loss of life that we didn't look at for the IFHMP. Then we estimated the inundation probability, the chance, the probability side of the risk equation in terms of will the dyke breach? Where will the water go if it does? We looked at economic risk assessment. Sorry, I'm supposed to be going up here. There we go. We looked at economic risk assessment in terms of the benefit-cost ratios on different dyke upgrades and what your exposures are as a community. And we completed a loss-of-life risk assessment to try to get our heads wrapped around what the potential fatalities might look like in a major flood. And then, of course, we repeated that process for the three floodplains that David presented, north of the Mamcom, south of the Mamcom, and then the coastal floodplain. In terms of the flood mapping update, in a nutshell, what we do there is we run the model for a number of different dyke breach scenarios, and then we take those results and we put them together so that we can take the worst-case result for each location in the floodplain regardless of which model scenario it came from. That gives us an envelope map that shows the worst-case conditions. And we do that for a number of different things. We look at what elevation the water might rise to, the depth of that water in the community, how fast it's moving through the floodplain, the product of depth and velocity, which if you're out standing on the floodplain when the dyke breaches, that's what will control the physical hazard to an exposed person, and how quickly the water comes up within the dyked areas. Is it rising quickly or slowly, and will you have enough time to get away? In terms of the probability side of the equation, we have to look at what are the chances the dyke will breach? And as the flood gets larger, the probability of seeing that flood goes down, but the chance of the dyke breaching that flood goes up. So, there's a bit of a trade-off there between flood events and dyke breach probabilities. In this case, we estimated the dyke breach, the dyke failure probability for each floodplain under each flood event, and then we distributed that failure probability along the dyke. So, you can see in my, the different colored arrows there are a little bit hard to see, but the most upstream arrow there is 10%. So, let's say there's a 10% chance of the dyke failing at or upstream of that location. When you move downstream a little bit, the probability increases to 20% of a failure at or upstream of that location, and so on to 30%. After we do that, we have to provide an area that gets flooded by each of those breaches. And you can see again the colors of flooded area corresponding to the little dyke breach arrows. And then we simply take the probability of the dyke breaching and apply that as the probability of those areas getting wet. So, you can see that the light blue there has, in this example, a 10% chance of getting wet. The medium blue has a 20% chance of getting wet, and the darker blue has a 30% chance of getting wet. And once again, this would be within a single flood event, say the 200-year return period on the river. If that event happens, this is the chance of those areas getting wet during that 200-year event. Oops. There we go. I'm using the mouse backhand, sorry. So, these are two examples of the kinds of maps that we produce. You're obviously looking at the upper floodplain here, and these are maps of the probability of getting wet during that event. On the left, you have the probability of areas getting wet during a 1 in 200-year flood, and on the right, you have the probability of areas getting wet during the 1 in 1,000-year flood. So, it's a lot bigger flooding on the river, and of course, the probability of getting wet is higher. The white and pink colors are actually fairly low probabilities. Obviously, you want to be white. Pink gets a little bit higher, but then you can see on the right-hand map, as you go from pink through blue, greens, and all the way to brown, your probability keeps climbing. And the brown area there in the core are the areas that get wet no matter where the dyke breaches. That's where the water wants to run to, and it forms a great big bathtub that backs up until it can spill back out over the top of the dyke and into the river again. In terms of the economic risk assessment, for each combination of river flood and dyke upgrade, we have to do a couple of things. The first step is that we have to estimate the economic damage that would result if that area got inundated. And then we simply adjust those estimates for things like inflation, local market conditions, new development, et cetera. So, again, in terms of an example, taking the 200-year flood, if the dykes fail on the upper floodplain during a 200-year flood, you're looking at somewhere around the neighborhood of $500 million in damages. On the lower floodplain, that number goes up to about 600, and for the coastal floodplain, the number is about 400. Now, that is the number if the 200-year flood occurs and if the dyke breaches. So, then we start to pull those ifs out of the equation because we don't really want to say, well, you know, if the flood occurs and if the dyke breaches, we've got this much damage. That doesn't really help us make good decisions. So, we start taking the ifs out and putting the probabilities in instead. And when we adjust for the probability of dyke failure still during the 200-year flood, it changes the damage estimates. And you can see with the dykes you've got out there right now, the number for the upper floodplain goes from 500 down to 195. If you upgrade to the standard dykes at the provincial standard level, it's down to 67. And if you go to the standard that's recommended in the IFHMP, you're down to about 28. And then you can see similar patterns happening as we apply the probability weightings to the lower floodplain and the coastal floodplain. So, then the next piece is we have to look at all the different flood events. We've got a bunch of dyke breaches for one flood event. Now, we have to look at a bunch of different flood events. And the way we do that is not simply presented using a figure here. In this figure, we're plotting flood damage on the vertical axis, obviously up is higher, and return period on the horizontal axis. Now, you'll note that it's kind of backwards. We're starting with the biggest events because they actually have the smallest probability. So, the 10,000-year event is hard on the vertical axis, and we're working our way out to the top. So, you can see that the flood damages are very high at the very large and infrequent events, and they slowly come down until you get to a 10-year event that probably wouldn't flood anything even if the dyke wasn't there. Where the magic happens is when we start plotting that, for example, for the existing dyke, and then we add a second curve for the Super Dyke. And you can see that at most flood events, there's actually a significantly lower amount of economic damage that the community experiences because you've got better dykes. And then, of course, once the water levels way up over the dyke, it doesn't make any difference again. But that difference between them are the benefits that the community realizes by upgrading that dyke. It's the damages that are avoided. And when we take that area and do some fancy calculus integrals, we get the area, that gray shaded area there, and that's what gives us the total for the benefits. And that, those benefits then, we can put together, sorry.
Shall I go on?
Yes, please. Yep. Those benefits we can put together into benefit-cost ratios. As I'm sure you're all aware, a benefit-cost ratio is basically a number that tells us if I put $1 into activity X, how much of a return am I going to see? And of course, if you have a benefit-cost ratio, 1 means $1 in equals $1 out. In this case, the QRA has concluded that for the upper floodplain, for every dollar that you put into the dyke upgrades, you're probably going to see a return of $2 in avoiding those damages. And that's your worst case. The lower floodplain is even higher, it's almost 10. And when we put sea level rise into the equation, we look at the proposed sea dyke, you're actually at an unprecedented level. The benefit-cost ratio on that is over 100. And what that's basically telling you is that there's no way that Swamish would ever see a meter of sea level rise and not take action to protect downtown. It just makes too much sense, the writing's a little off. And we saw that in the IFHMP. So, as I mentioned, benefit-cost ratios of greater than 1 are representing a balance of benefits and costs. In this case, you're greater, and that's really good for dykes because usually you end up with relatively low benefits and costs because it's about people and communities and all of these intangible things. When you can show a good economic return like you've got there, that's a great sell. So, moving quickly on to loss of life and how we look at risk to life. Risk to life is measured against criteria that have been established in the recent OCP update, and we look at it in two ways. First of all, we look at it for individuals. And that's based on the most exposed or vulnerable person living in the floodplain at any given time. The standards defined in the OCP is that that person should have a 1 in 10,000 chance per year or less of being killed, and that's if they're in existing development. If we're looking at putting new people in the floodplain as part of a new development, the standard should be even lower. We should tolerate less risk because we're making a decision to put more people in harm's way, and that standard drops to 1 in 1,000,000. But we also look at risk to life for groups, and that's because society has pretty clearly told us that as the number of people at risk goes up and the number of fatalities that could result goes up, our tolerance should go down accordingly. And we measure that with something called an FN curve. And that's going to be pretty important later on, so I thought we'd just take a moment here and show you one. This is the FN curve that's in your OCP right now. The F, again, refers to probability, and the N refers to consequences, in this case, the number of fatalities. It's important to note on that curve there that these aren't linear scales, they're logarithmic scales. So, each line on the grid represents an order of magnitude going ahead at 1, 10, 100,000, and 10,000 across the bottom, similarly upward on the probabilities. We have three zones on that as well. The zone at the top has been labeled unacceptable where risks are generally, you have to do more to mitigate them. And then you have a zone at the bottom called broadly acceptable where the risks are generally comparable to things you might do every day, getting on a plane, getting in a car, and so on. And then you have this zone in the middle, hopefully called ALARP, which stands for as low as reasonably practicable, which is fancy engineering speak for, it means you've got to keep making further improvements to the risk situation, doing further mitigation until the cost of those measures becomes grossly disproportionate to the benefits that you receive. So, we're not talking about a cost-benefit of 1, we're talking about maybe 0.1, 0.01 as a cost-benefit ratio to get, to be able to live with those risks. So, that's a bit about the FN curve. Let's talk a bit about how we got our estimates together. We built something called an event tree. And in an event tree, we start asking ourselves questions. For example, what is the area of interest? Has the dyke been upgraded? What's happening on the river at that time? How big is the flood? Where will the dyke breach occur? In this case, we picked 10 areas. We could have picked 100, we could have picked 5. What time of day is it when the dyke breaches? Will people be at home or at work? That changes the number of people that are exposed. And then finally, was the floodplain evacuation completed before the dyke breach or not? And you can see that as we go through each one of those questions, our probabilities are multiplying, and we're into a number of different scenarios, each one unique. So, each branch of that event tree makes different assumptions. And each set of assumptions defines the probability of a scenario. That's what we call F in the FN. And then each scenario gives us a different number of fatalities. That's where the N comes from. So, just by way of a quick example here, I've got three scenarios here. They're just numbers I made up. In the first scenario, you've got a fairly high probability of 150, but only four people die. In the third scenario, you've got a much lower probability of 3, but 85 people die. So, we take these probabilities and we say, okay, in how many scenarios do at least four people die? And then we take those probabilities for 1, 2, and 3. In this case, we add them together, and that becomes 1 point on our FN curve. Then we look at a second point, and we say, okay, let's move up to the next one. How many scenarios do 17 people die? And then we take the probability from those two scenarios, in this case, 2 and 3, and that becomes our second point, and so on to the third point here. And so, when we're done, one more, please. We're left with a curve here, and in this case, you can see we're plotting in the middle to the bottom of the ALARP zone, and that would tell us that we have to continue to try to mitigate that risk to bring those results down further until the benefits become grossly disproportionate to the costs. So, that's basically the process that we went through. In terms of the risk results for loss of life, we looked at the actual fatality calculation using three different equations. One developed in the Netherlands, one developed after Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans, and one developed for dam safety by the United States Bureau of Reclamation. And we wanted to use more than one equation because obviously, if we pick one equation and it gives you a very specific result, is that because that's what the risk is, or is that because we picked the wrong equation? You can see here that there is some disagreement between the equations, but overall, a number of them are telling you that the risk is unacceptable for, this is the risk to individuals. The risk is unacceptable for many scenarios, including some where you've actually implemented the full you've actually implemented the full suite of super dike upgrades that were developed for the IFHMP. Yeah, maybe we can go on one more here. So when we map that in terms of spatially, where are the highest risks in Swamish? You can see here that the hottest, reddest areas are the areas of highest risk, and obviously, the greenest areas, just like the Netherlands map there, those are your areas of lowest risk. What we found really quite interesting about this is that despite the fact that we didn't use risk in the IFHMP, we did bring in this idea of controlled densification. Where do we want to try to tap the brakes a little bit and make sure we're making wise decisions of densification? And you can see that they actually overlay quite well with the hotspots of risk coming out of the QRA. So that's a bit of evidence there that shows that you're on the right track and that those are going to help you manage risk going forward. Moving on to group risk now, this is risk to multiple groups of individuals. These is what it looks like for the upper floodplain. There's three curves on there, I probably can't read the legend, but the red line is the line with your existing dykes. The blue line is the line with dykes, that's the middle one, upgraded to the provincial standard. And the green line is where you end up once you've implemented that IFHMP super dike. And you can see that those lines are still a ways into that unacceptable zone, but it's important to note that even though they look close together, those lines, the grid lines there are logarithmic. So you're moving towards an order of magnitude drop in risk as you go from one to the next. So the improvements that you're investing in are having a big effect, it's just that the risk situation is at a point where we can't really see that yet. It's really important to keep going, because you have to get through that area. When we switch on to the lower floodplain, you can see that the risk is a bit lower, and again, you've got the existing dike in red, the standard dykes in blue, and the super dike in green, but you're now getting down a lot closer to that ALARP zone, which is somewhere that you'd like to be. And for the coastal risk, again, these results are assuming 1 meter of sea level rise, so you can see that the existing dike is not going to do a very good job under 1 meter of sea level rise. But once you build that IFHMP sea dike, you're doing actually better than either of the river floodplains in terms of managing that risk. So the last thing in leaving that, that I'll draw your attention to, is that little caution sign again. We do exceed the OCP risk tolerance threshold. There is some uncertainty in the numbers, but we're trying to give you a general indication of where that risk lies, and I hope that you've been able to take that from the graphs.
Okay, so getting to a summary of results, as David just mentioned, the risk to loss of life does exceed the OCP's risk tolerance thresholds under most different banking scenarios. We do have very favorable benefit cost ratios that justify the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. And so taking those two things together, this quantitative risk assessment really supports the recommendations of the IFHMP. The scope of this project was to evaluate risk, it wasn't necessarily to prepare a detailed mitigation as to what to do about that. And the district has also just gone through a three-year process where we have developed a very detailed mitigation plan. But having said that, this quantitative risk assessment is providing us with new information, and so we felt compelled to provide some recommendations as to next steps. So first and foremost is to continue implementing the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. We have been, the district has been successfully implementing this. In the past 16 months, we have adopted an OCP that limits densification in the highest hazard areas, through a land use plan, and also encourages growth in safer areas. We've also adopted a floodplain bylaw that has enforced floodproofing regulations for new development, and we have included a development permit area in our new OCP that preserves critical floodways through the community. And we've also been quite successful with improving our dike protections, we've received a $4 million grant, and we're working on a dike upgrade right now in Rockendale. And the district also has a $4 million per year budget in our five-year financial plan, assuming $2 million that are coming from municipal funding, and we're supplementing that with an additional $2 million from senior government grant funding. So basically, doing all of these measures is reducing our community's risk, and it's recommended to continue with this program. Some further recommendations in terms of separating to short term and long term. So short term is to improve our flood-specific emergency planning, and really, the key thing here is to develop our evacuation plan. So if 100% of the population evacuates the floodplain prior to the onset of the flood, our risk to loss of life is zero, there's no one there to experience that hazard. And so this is a really effective, short-term and low-cost way to mitigate risk in the community. So the district has budgeted to prepare a flood-specific annex to our comprehensive emergency management plan. Some of the key things this is going to do are to develop triggers for evacuation alerts, notices, and orders, and also to develop some of the logistics as to routes for how people would get out of the floodplain. The next recommendation is to preserve space for future dike upgrades, so we recommend to do this as part of a floodplain bylaw amendment. So right now, we have setbacks measured from a 1 in 500-year dike, and based on the results of this, while we may not have funding to upgrade to a higher standard any time in the near future, we do think that we should be making that job a little bit easier and to accommodate that potential that we may want to seek a higher standard at some point in the future, so to increase the setback from the Swamish River dike. Also, to educate the public, this is a really critical aspect, the more knowledgeable the general public is, the more likely they are to take this risk seriously to be prepared in the event of an emergency. We have done a lot of public education through the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, and we intend to do more as part of developing our emergency response plan. We also have significant resources on the district's website, I'll have some links to that later on. And also to leverage this QRA. So as I said, Swamish is now leading the pack in terms of our information. When we submit grant applications, we have excellent rationale now, and we stand a very good chance of being successful with those. In the longer term, it's recommended to consider the results of this risk assessment for future planning, so things like our next IFHMP update, which are scheduled for 2027, our Eagle viewing dike master plan, future OCP amendments, and so on. And some of the key things that we think we should consider are whether we should be planning for a higher standard for the Swamish River dike, land use planning as well, and even post-disaster planning, so if there is a major flood, to be using the results of this to help inform whether we should be rebuilding back in some high-risk areas. We also have some recommendations to the public as part of this. So the first is to be aware, to know the hazards and risks so that you can be prepared. There are extensive resources on the district's website, I've provided a couple links here, one is for our emergency program, and others for our Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. Second is to be prepared. So first of all, we recommend to, for all residents, to sign up for Swamish Alert. This is an emergency notification system that notifies the public by text, email, or phone in the event of an emergency, and gives them critical information when that's happening. We also recommend to prepare personal evacuation plan, personal emergency plan, so to have emergency kits, to know where, what your evacuation route is, have places to go, and so on. So again, further information is available at the district's website. And finally, to listen to evacuation alerts and orders. These are not issued lightly in the event of an emergency, and so often, there is quite a bit of advance notice on extreme weather, people have an opportunity to be prepared. But once the dike breaches, the water can spread very quickly, and we found through our modeling that roads are the first place that the floodwater goes to. And so, once the dike breach happens, it may be too late to actually evacuate, so that's why it's really critical to be paying attention and to listen to those orders. So some conclusions. First of all, Swamish is in one. These are some pretty scary results, but Swamish is one of many floodplain communities in B.C. and in the world. There are many areas of the world that have unacceptable risk, New Orleans, Netherlands, and there are probably many communities out there that have unacceptable risk and don't know it. So we're in the unique position of having this information. And so because we have this information, we can plan for, plan our mitigation, plan for emergency response, so we're doing a lot of good work here. We're building on a solid foundation. Swamish has invested $20 million over the past 12 years on flood protection improvements. We have excellent flood management policy, so we're doing a lot of the right things. We have a plan. That's, Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is really guiding a lot of what we're doing. So that's the end of the presentation. We have some time for questions and discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, that was quite informative. My understanding is now that we're upgrading in the Upper Judslew area to the 200-year level, and there's, I'm going by memory now, there's two other areas that we have identified that are not at that level that we're bringing up. And then, at some point, we start kicking into the 500-year program if funding is available. We wait for those three to be done, or would we ever think of after two, going to a 500-year in a certain section? Is there some plan for that?
Yes, so this is, I'll jump ahead, this is a slide I had just ready in waiting. So, not predictable. This is our dike improvement plan, a summary of it through our Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. So it's first, the recommendation is to first correct existing dike deficiencies, and that means building our dike to a 1 in 200-year level first, so meeting the provincial standard first, and then it's building a sea dike. That's really kind of part of number one, is to make sure that you have a sea dike that meets present-day standards. And then, once we have that, once we meet provincial standards, then to consider going to a higher standard after that point. So right now, we're building everything with a plan to reach to that future level. If we're looking at acquiring statutory right-of-ways opportunistically, then we would definitely be considering that longer-term plan, and we are considering that as well through our floodplain bylaw. But in terms of physically building it, we're only building to a 1 in 200-year level today.
Just to follow up on that, the Upper Judslew area, my memory is the Eagle Run area, and there's, where's the third one? Was there, was it just three there below 200 right now?
It's to build the sea dike to a minimum of 3.3 meters along the whole corridor, so Upper Judslew, Eagle viewing area, and the sea dike to an intermediate level are sort of the top three priorities in our plan.
Many of the other deficiencies are localized where there are deficiencies, localized low points. For example, the CM rail crossing on the Mapquim South dike, Swamish River Lower dike, that's a localized low point, and you know, without CM on board, you're not going to be able to do anything there anyways. Those, the three that we nailed are the big ones, the big takeout items, for sure.
I'd love to speak to CM next time I see that. Councilor Shonan.
So in the model, we have, we're maintaining the Eagle View dike at a 1 in 200-year height, correct? And there was some discussion in the paper about trade-offs of making that higher and the impact it might have on the back of the bike. Can you speak a little bit on how we plan to address that in the coming planning?
They wrote their report.
So.
You're a council, David.
I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled, that's fantastic.
Excellent, excellent question. So the consideration there is that if there's a dike breach upstream of that area and water is flowing through the community, what we found with previous flood modeling was that the water would actually overtop the dike and get back out again. Whereas if we build the whole thing up to a higher level, that water actually can't get back out. And so then, it's potentially increasing the consequences of a flood in some areas. And so the question or a consideration that Colonel Bydel had is, then should we actually be upgrading the dike in that area if it's potential to make the consequences worse? There's a whole bunch of detailed analysis that really needs to go into answering that question, and we have attempted that question as part of this study, but it's something that needs to happen in the future as part of our future dike upgrading plans. Because we're only building to a 1 in 200-year standard for the foreseeable future, we haven't taken that extra step, but it is something that needs to be done.
Concerning your valuation and damage assumptions, the facilities you identify here are mostly public infrastructure, and you also have vehicles. I'm wondering if there's any advantage in pursuing this analysis further with another layer of information? In the old days, there used to be insurance maps produced for municipalities and for industrial facilities with the... So should we, can we go further in making these evaluations? I see also you're using the transportation analysis zones, I believe going back to 2005, they were updated in 2011. Some of that information is dated, and that dated information was the subject during the last DCC bylaw review, like unemployment projections and traffic and so on. So my general question is, should we, can we improve this data instead of strategic
Sure, yeah, great question, great question. That's, that goes back to that little caution sign that David has there. Those are definitely flagged as some of the assumptions and uncertainties that are in, you know, amongst the many. The question that, or the point that you mentioned about valuation, that's really the key. We could do a deep dive on this and do better, you know, we're not at the Netherlands level, we're not, you know, without going into too much detail, we necessarily, we were constrained by scope and resources as we, it's Swamish, right? You have a population of 20,000, and you know, you're struggling with the same issues as Richmond and Amsterdam. But within that scope, we've taken this look, and the real question is, even if some of these change, you know, I would be very surprised, given that it's Swamish, if you're going to see, for example, those benefit cost ratios on the dike go down. I'd be very surprised if you're going to see, for example, the loss of life estimates go down by enough to really change the conclusion that we draw, which is, we've really got to stay the course and make sure that, you know, we're protecting the community's interests as the IFHMP is implemented. And so I would say that the real question there is, if mayor and council see value in putting more resources into getting a more accurate picture of the risk, then yeah, there's definitely more that we could do. Even as your consultant, I'm not sure that it's worth it.
That's an answer you want here very often.
Do you have a follow-up, or the second question?
On a different topic.
Go ahead.
Oh, right. Your, completely, your recommendations have a strong emphasis on the sea dike and its significance, and we are still looking at options for that sea dike alignment. What is the status of our consideration of those options? Because you're looking at potential further investigating how we might intentionally breach them at certain points as part of our strategy, that depends on what option we choose, I assume. What's the status of that?
So the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan lays out a sea dike in plan in terms of the location, its alignment, the type of sea dike. We've also looked at intentional sea dike breach locations. This is really a future consideration for the time when we actually have the sea dike built. But having said that, we need to consider that in our design and construction of the sea decks so that it's possible and easier to do. There's certain types of dike that you can design to fail intentionally if water builds up behind it, or that water would be relieved through gates or some other mechanism. So we're at a preliminary stage in terms of that detailed design consideration, but we do have an overarching plan with the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. In terms of our emergency management planning, I think that it's something that we should really be earmarking, because it's not an issue that we have in the present day, but it's something that future emergency plans really need to incorporate, is that intentional sea dike breach, how it would be implemented, specifically where it would be implemented, what resources you would need to actually enact that successfully, so that, those sorts of considerations.
So the alignment of the coastal flood protection is really where you left off in the 2015 report?
As well as the type, so whether it be a sheet pile, or a standard dike, or a breach or something, it includes that as well.
Keep going.
The, the value, the evacuation route filing, is there not a pending report that might be coming to us further?
Overdue, Megan?
Yes, there is. So we're hoping at the end of April to present the final report pending the report received with our public engineers. And that will show sort of one side of the equation. That will show the constraints and the efficiencies basically of evacuating people from different neighborhoods within Squamish, and also looking at a regional level in the whole sea dike corridor. So that'll show the evacuation side of it. And what we're hoping to do this year is to develop a separate annex to our emergency plan, which looks at flood evacuation, which is what David was talking about earlier. And that will show us the trigger points for evacuation. So we're, we're sort of building a timeline essentially of how long it would take to actually do an evacuation, how we could avoid loss of life, and also some of the economic damage, and, and how far back we would have to get to make that decision.
Is this your last one?
Yes, it is. I wondered if.
I mean, I'll come back to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can do this one.
Oh, right.
More often.
I, I wondered if I could get a Coles notes explanation as to how you're using industrial way as kind of a border zone in your mapping. You give, I, I forgot where the reference to it was, but there was some explanation. So I wonder if you might be able to highlight that as to where that fits in? Why is that a border?
That's the magic industrial wave flood wall. We needed to take a bit of a different approach. The upper, in, in some ways, the upper floodplain was actually easier because if the dike breach is a Judd Slough, the water's going to flow down to Garibaldi Estates. If the water breach is at the Mamquayam Golf Course, the water's going to flow down to Garibaldi Estates. So in that case, you've got converging but consistent flow directions. In the case of the, the south Mamquayam and lower Squamish dike there up at the top of the lower floodplain, if, if those dikes breach, the water's actually going to tend to flow southward, more in a north-south direction, rather than spreading out across the floodplain and ending up in the same spot. So we had to, again, you know, not being able to model every, every breach on the dike and come up with unique results, we had to be able to take a step back and say, how can we address these probabilities in a realistic way? And what we found is when we were looking at the results from the different scenarios that we did run is that the highway actually provides a, you know, more or less consistent barrier to flow moving east and west across it until you get as far south as about industrial way. It's by no means the straight line that you can see on the probability map, but we have to draw a line somewhere just to be able to do the math. And so what you see is that at industrial way, you start to see some of the water coming back from up top, or from, from down at the bottom as you get that bathtub building up. And you start to see more of the water moving east and west, regardless of where on the top it started, comes down that far and it kind of spreads out as, as you fill in the downtown. So I guess to, to tie that back in, we estimated probabilities separately for areas that are east of Highway 99 and west of Highway 99. And so what we said is with the exception of a little bit of flow near the underpass at Centennial Way, those are going to be pretty separate risks. But the area to the south, because of that bathtub effect, it doesn't matter where the dike breach is, they're getting wet in any of them. Does that make sense? It just ends up looking a bit weird.
So if I understood the, the report correctly, we looked at the cost of building mitigations in terms of the capital cost, but I didn't get the sense that you're including operational sort of maintenance costs. Are, in relation to all this, are they considered to be insignificant? Or is that just beyond the scope of this model? And might we expect if we included those, the cost benefit of some of the mitigation might not be always good?
So when we're talking about river dikes, I think that generally speaking, the cost to maintain a standard dike versus the super dike is going to be about the same. There's, we're doing vegetation management, we're doing inspections. Those are fairly fixed costs. It's going to have a slightly bigger footprint, but I think that the, the maintenance costs would be about the same. And we plan to maintain those dikes under any scenario. So we haven't considered those costs. In terms of the sea dike, we're actually building new sections of sea dike where we have no maintenance costs right now and where we will in the future. So it's a good point. But I, I think we, we did take it into consideration. And I think it's just probably, it was a step beyond our, our scope for this budget. We were just looking at capital costs and to keep things reasonably simple. And again, it goes back to the assumptions that, that are going into, we sort of have to draw a line somewhere as to how far to go.
I could say though, that for any of the dikes, the sea dike is the one you should be the least concerned about because of that very, very high benefit cost ratio. I think it, you know, there's, there's a number of, again, assumptions that go into it. And when we start talking about those high numbers, there's a, you know, fair, fair credibility questions. But I think the actual number was about 173 or something like that. So you could give away a lot of dollars on the operations side and still end up very, very positive in the long-term analysis. Present day, you know, you don't need to be at four points southern or whatever we've assumed for the sea dike at 120, 100. But by the time that sea level's up a meter going.
So we, we considered dollars and cents damages and looked at that in the analysis. But, you know, it struck me, and the risk to human life, but it struck me too that, you know, things like a bathtub, we have sometimes unintended consequences where maybe species at risk as we build up mitigations to protect human life and dollars and cents. Maybe we're increasing risk to, you know, species that if we just sort of let the area flood, they survive better. So putting some of the additional things, which we just, you know, I understand why that's maybe beyond the scope at this point. But considering some of those things and, and thinking that, you know, on the one hand, this does reinforce the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, I did start to ask the question, which I think has been asked at various times, but when do we think about retreat? Or what's the trigger for retreat? And why don't we say, well, sure, there's a dollars and cents advantage, net advantage to doing this mitigation, but maybe we're just better off going to higher ground? And, and what's the trigger for that? What's our thinking around that?
So through the mayor, at a very, very high level, we did consider that option, retreat, as part of our Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. So we looked at, that was sort of the bookend as far as we went in one direction. And then we went all the way to building, you know, an unfailable dike on the other end. And then we looked at a whole bunch of different options in between. And that's how we end up settling on our land use management plan that we ended up with in our OCP. So we're looking at retreat. The cost of acquiring land and actually retreating are in the billions of dollars versus building diking, which is, you know, the full cost of our Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is about a million dollars. So just from looking at the, the comparison of values, that's where we determined that a protect approach and using land use management and floodproofing regulations is sort of the sweet spot for, for the Squamish community. It, I think it just is beyond sort of the comprehension at this point to consider retreat because it's the costs and uncertainty in climate change moving forward. So, you know, it's, it's a really good question and it's something that the community needs to grapple with in the long term. But it's just sort of those costs and social consequences and all that stuff are sort of beyond, I think, where we are right now, or at least where the, the previous council was.
And. I think it's a very much a positive that we're even having the discussion, you're asking the question, because that's where, that's where the process starts. I, I would flag that the IFHMP identifies that particularly as infrastructure reaches the end of its life, the district should ask the question, is this something that we can move outside the floodplain? And, and for some items, you know, as part of the renewal process, you can do that cost-effectively. And that's where I think the process would, would start. Some things you, you won't be able to. You know, if you need the tantalous fire hall to stay where it is because of response times, that's where it's got to be. But other things you may be able to say, no, look, it doesn't make sense to rebuild here, let's move it over to the other side. And I think that's definitely something that you can conceive of over time and just use that to try to leverage a larger discussion. Where do we go if sea levels come up one meter, two meters more?
Yeah. Do we have any sense if, if the reduction in risk is proportional to taxation levels? So, you know, I have a much bigger property or higher taxes and that sort of equates to the reduction of risk I see? Or is that just kind of beyond where we're at in terms of analysis?
I'm, I'm definitely going to say that's beyond where we're at in terms of analysis. I think as councillor Anderson asked, that's something that we could start to get into. The larger question is, you know, where would we want to go with that and how would we use it? And in that case, we can start to look at the resources invested versus the term.
Thank you. Councillor French, then councillor Sturrock and Race.
I'm curious about available floodplain on the east side of the Squamish rivers. And so specifically, across from the Eagleviewing area, there are historical Squamish River channels.
West side.
West side.
West side, yes, correct, sorry. Does the modeling take into effect or account for water potentially getting into those channels and helping to reduce overboard on the populated side?
Should we let councillor Anderson answer? That's a great question. That's a great question. The answer is yes, with an asterisk. And I, I say that because it looks at the conditions of, I'm not even sure when we did this survey, I think it was 2007, it looks at the conditions of, of the river at that time. And it takes those conditions into account. We're not restricting it to, you know, a portion of this floodplain. We're allowing it to spread out as the water would spread out if it, if it, you know, if you got a flood of that size. One of the things that we've talked about actually a fair bit in the IFHMP and its predecessors was the idea of potentially opening up a new channel over there. And that's something that has a lot of logistical and political challenges associated with it, and it would definitely not be cheap. Yeah, there's, you know, you through the wildlife management area there, you've got to access the other side with the construction equipment and so on and so forth. But that's definitely something, I think it, there was a report from 1950, I think, the PD report, that actually had engineering drawings laid out there for, for expanding the, the slough through Bracken Dell.
You can see the, the channel I believe you're talking about on the left side there. And you can see sort of an abandoned river channel that councillor Anderson has previously let us know is called the Nygaard Cut.
The Nygaard Cut.
And some people have termed it the Bracken Dell, Bracken Dell Slough as well. So there has been consideration. My understanding is that the river used to fall along that channel, that there was a log jam that basically caused sediment and everything to build up. And then the channel started to flow along its present course. And so there's been discussion about opening up that log jam and reactivating that river channel, potentially having, trying to have the river migrate west within its floodplain. We've done a little bit of analysis into that and think that basically with the dike constructed the way that it is, it's really sending the river kind of along its present course towards the Eagleviewing area. And it's likely that a log jam would build up there again in the future. If, for instance, the dike alignment was changed in the upper Judd Slough area, so to put it at the right side of that red zone, then the river could actually migrate east and then it could flow in a more north-southerly, southerly direction. And then that would be a more likely way that, that that channel could be activated in a sustainable way. It's just the investments actually realign the dike. And of course, there's Squamish Nation reserve land, there's developed private parcels. So there's a whole bunch of challenges that are associated with, with that option.
But that is the kind of thing that you're thinking about with the idea of a post-disaster plan. Are there things that we would do differently if we got a do-over?
I'm also curious about the downtown area and the sea diking. We seem to put a lot of emphasis on protecting the true, like the downtown, and not so much over on the old Air Force site. What's with that?
So we have called the, the areas that the, the sea dike is protecting, we call connected coastal floodplains. So they're all, all of those areas are protected by the sea dike. Then we have areas like wood fiber, the oceanfront lands, waterfront land, and Scott Crescent. These are all, we're calling them unconnected coastal sites. So they can all determine their own flood mitigation plan independently. If they flood, it doesn't impact flooding on any other lands. And so the concept that is prepared in, or is recommended in the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is that each one of those sites needs to prepare its own site-specific flood mitigation plan. And mostly what that's entailling is filling the lands and providing erosion protection along the shoreline, not building dikes because it's just a less robust solution compared with just raising the whole land. You don't have that possibility of a dike breach.
Thank you. Councillor.
Yeah, thank you for all your work on the report. It was very impressive. I grew up, my family home is a, the dike is a backyard in Bracken Dell. So I, I've spent quite a bit of time waking up in the morning, looking out at an almost flooding river and walking down below that level for breakfast. So. Pouch down with the diking system we have. And along the same sort of lines as councillor French touched on with the alignment there of the river and the explanations there, I'm, I'm curious about sort of, councillor Pedigil was asking about maintenance of the, of the dike. What about the maintenance of the, of the channel? So in, in past, we've heard about, you know, there's gravel buildup, vegetation. And I get the vegetation, maybe drop velocity down and help. Can you speak to sort of that in general without going to specific spotter project?
Sure.
Or you can go into spotter project if you'd like, but.
So there's two, two kind of main components that I'm, I'm hearing there. One is vegetation management, and that's actually on our dike itself. So we do have a program and it's sort of part of our provincial regulations that we need to maintain all vegetation on our dike itself. Because as it gets bigger, it grows roots and those roots grow into our dike. And the tree dies, the roots decay, it leaves sinkholes, it can create preferential seepage pathways through the dike and so on. So we do have a program of maintaining vegetation on our dike. And it's something that our public works have been working hard on and developing programs to make up for lost years in the past where we have to, quite extensive vegetation on our diking system. In terms of sediment building up within our, our river systems, the, the general philosophy of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is to build our dikes up to the recommended standard and then to consider dredging sediment and gravel and build up more as a maintenance approach as opposed to as a mitigation approach. So we wouldn't necessarily consider going in and removing a vast amount of sediment from the river in order to reduce flood levels. But we would consider that if there's a major flood that comes in or just cumulatively over time, the sediment's building up and it's reducing the conveyance of the river channel, that we could do some maintenance dredging in order to keep flood levels static as opposed to decade after decade flood levels rising higher as sediment built up.
Isn't that what we've been experiencing now since the construction decades, decade ago of the, of the dike season?
Yes, and the, the flood modeling, so I guess we kind of maybe could consider it sort of like hitting the reset button when we did our flood modeling for the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. That sets a bit of a baseline.
The starting point is now where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then it up, I was, vegetation along the dike, I understand. I'm, I'm curious about like, for instance, that piece in Bracken Dell there, the, the green before the, you hit the river, it's a big front Fisherman's Park there, that whole, that whole zone. At one point was, looked, was just almost entirely sand with a few tufts of trees. So I was thinking about stuff like that. And similarly, on the Mamquayam, you've got areas where there's now forests that are inside that floodplain that hasn't been before and a flood event, I suppose, will get flushed every once in a while. It hasn't, hasn't yet. But how, how does that play in? And is it sort of having that vegetation there keeps velocity down? And that's a positive or how?
So in terms of diking, there are a couple of different types of, or there's a bunch of different types of dike. But there's one that's called a setback dike, where you basically have the river and then you have a vegetated overbank, so trees. and then you have a vegetated overbank, so trees and sort of a lowline floodplain, and then you have your dike. So there's a physical separation between the river and the dike. And that's great for us because it's lower maintenance. You don't have erosion and scour happening at the dike itself. So that's, that's something that I think we should maintain and allow that to continue happening. I wouldn't suggest to go in there and cut down trees. Very environmentally sensitive area, and also, you know, providing that dual protection and reducing maintenance and exposure of the river to the dike.
Yeah, the, thank you. The, again, great questions. The most efficient river that you're going to have for actually getting water through, the thing that's going to do the best job of getting the water through so you don't have to worry about it anymore is a concrete channel. And they tried that in Europe. And in Europe, right now, you'll see a bunch of, a bunch of different initiatives that are actually intended, trying to pull works back, renaturalize the channels, and give the river room to be a river. And that's going on two things. Well, obviously, the environmental side is huge because, you know, you wanted to have a natural and functioning ecosystem around it. But more than that, they found that having these areas that can flood during a flood and come back, so you're not cramming all of that water through a small pipeline, those actually have a lot of risk reduction benefits as well. You know, it can chew out the bank a little bit over here, but, you know, we're not fighting it because the next event is probably going to chew out a little bit over there, and it might even put something back over here. So you really, you know, the less you can interfere with a river trying to be a river, the better you're going to be from a risk perspective, an environmental perspective, and definitely from an operations perspective.
So you have to have one more.
Yeah.
I've always been curious about the mountain where it gets wide, the sort of available channel for the river gets wider, then narrower, then wider again. And one of the, the site viewpoints was right at that sea and crossing, and you've got the pressures of Squamish coming in, coming in there. And I, yeah, there weren't any discussion about adjusting that, so I assume that we're, under the cost benefits, not there to do that, or it's just a perceived problem, that there's seriously lots of water going through a wide space and then a narrow space again. And is there any in there?
So that's an option that we haven't, realigning the dike, there's something that we haven't considered as far as I'm aware. I think because, well, on the north side, we have our public works yard and wastewater treatment plant that are immediately adjacent to the dike, so there's, you know, it'd be really difficult and expensive to realign the dike on the north. On the south, it's private land, so, I mean, rebuilding the dike is always going to be very costly. But then there's also private land considerations, there's the West Coast Railway Museum, it's not too far, so.
So I guess that's just affects that height we go to in that area to accommodate the fact that a bunch of water is going to kind of pinch down into, we just have to go higher.
That's right, and that would be taken into our, into account in the flood model in terms of determining how high the water rises. Thank you.
I'm going to put myself on the list, and I'll go to councillor Race and Sturrock, because they've already spoken. But one of the things that we know is on our radar as a council is the realignment of the training dike and giving the river back more of its space in the lower part as it moves into the ocean. And so how do we incorporate that project into the work that's been done here? Like, how are those two projects going to come together as we figure out whether we can realign that dike or remove it? Well, I guess it's not a dike, is it?
Yeah, it's called a training berm once you get south of the spit access road. So realigning the dike there is a potential. If you look at our sea dike plan, the future sea dike would follow along government road and tie into the Squamish River dike, basically just south of West Coast Railway Museum. Once that sea dike is built, it makes the river dike south of that connection point redundant in a lot of ways. And so opening up that, that portion of floodplain can potentially have the effect of reducing upstream flood construction levels. And I think that hasn't been modeled, it hasn't been something that we've looked into in detail, but certainly is something that probably should happen in the future when kind of weighing the benefits and drawbacks of the.
But we should suspect that there's an impact to that level if we remove that training.
Yeah, and I think it's probably a beneficial impact because it's opening up a wider floodplain area, and it can just move more water through.
How far and how much remains a question.
Yeah.
But.
But it's certainly a question that we should be asking the council to make sure that we're connecting the work done here with whatever being proposed out of that plan. Councillor Race?
Well, that was actually sort of my question, but.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Because I was curious about, you know, with the, with the projects to get to 200-year level. One is underway now, more or less. One is probably in the works pretty quickly after that, which is the Eagle one. But the sea dike is happening in bits and pieces, partly because of development, of course, and pace for that portion of it. But I was curious about the part the district will be probably funding with grants perhaps, which is not going to be done by the private sector, particularly the part that is more or less between the wildlife management area and the downtown. And when, what the process is, first of all, to finalize the, the direction we'll take in the course of it, the location of it, and how we're proceeding with that. Because I am aware of the initiatives dealing with the training firm reorganizing that area and opening it up. And so I'm just wondering if the two of them fit together, because some of this work could happen relatively soon. If the staff had any views on timelines and what has to be done. And I assume some of this stuff is happening concurrently, if not necessarily sequentially.
So the area, I think probably that's most relevant to what you're talking about. We called reach one and reach two in the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. So that's looking from where the sea dike would meet up with the river dike, and basically follow along government road, and then follow the existing dike alignment around to the open development. So that, those are the two reaches. That area has been an area that is lower down on the priority list in terms of constructing sea dikes, and that's because we have de facto flood protection that's being provided by the railway. So the railway, even though it's not built as a dike, it's prone to seepage and so on. It's actually built up to about 3.3 meters elevation. So it is providing us with a level of flood protection versus some areas in the downtown, say Rose Park, Keweenag Park, and other areas where they're significantly lower than that and where development is much more exposed. So it's on our priority list, it is relatively lower. In terms of determining the alignment of it, the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan determined an alignment the best it could with the information that was available at that time. It was finalized as part of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, taking into account the truck route, the long-term truck route alignment from the downtown. And we considered that it could follow along the railway corridor if there was going to be a future Seventh Avenue connector truck route along that. But the truck route study didn't provide that as a recommendation. So we settled back to what's called the town dike alignment. You can see that in the coastal flood report of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. That's considered final unless there's some new information that comes forward that would compel us to change our plan. And that could be something like realigning the training berm. If there is opportunity for taking material from the training berm and using that to construct the sea dike along a different alignment. I'm not sure what other new information could come to light, but if something new comes, we could always, it's a plan. It's always subject to change and subject to the best information to go forward.
Just to follow up on that, but we had the presentation sometime last term, just towards the end of last term, from the Watershed Society, and it talked about phase one that they now have the grant for, which was opening up a couple of select spots in the existing berm to allow water to come into the estuary area. There was also a potential phase two, which was a dike that goes more or less from Third Avenue around and loops around the terminals to keep sediment away from the terminals. But my understanding is that that's dependent on our sea dike, and not being built necessarily, but at least the design part of it. And so are we sort of comfortable with the design now that that planning for that could go ahead?
I'm not sure I totally understand the question you're using.
Well, it might be for a different meeting.
Yeah, I, I think, if I may, that is far enough down. It's really looking at where the spit starts. It's far enough down that it shouldn't have a significant impact on the flooding or the sea dike, but that will be looked at in detail once we get to that phase. The first phase of opening up the small gap further up has been, has seen detail on like by key WL and shown on a very small incremental rise.
Want me to say that?
Sure.
Great. Councillor.
Very good question. So the five-year budget was applied to flood hazard management, and it's based $2 million from senior level government and $2 million from municipal government.
That's correct.
What is our level of confidence on that senior level government funding? Is there a knowing stream for that, or are you just kind of at base now?
So it's, I think we're hedging our bets. I think that there is a good likelihood of being able to significantly supplement our investment with senior government grants. There is one grant opportunity available right now, it's called the Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund. This is a 10-year program put forth by the federal government that has a minimum expenditure of $20 million. So they're looking at very large-scale structural flood protection improvements, and I believe that they would provide 60% funding.
Somewhere in the 50% to 60% range, something like that.
So I think we would have an excellent chance of being successful with that. We have just received $4 million through the New Build in Canada fund. So there are numerous different grants available that we have been pursuing and successful with. So I feel reasonably confident in that. It's possible that we could receive more, or it's possible that we could receive less. It's just impossible to know at this point.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess you want a motion from us to finalize this. So councillor, if you're comfortable with the staff recommendations, I'll put that forward. Remove the staff recommendations, second my councillor French. Any discussion before I call the question? Thank you for putting us out in front. You're the important, and we can all brag about that at UBC, and we're getting awards. I'll call the question, although the theater opposed motion carries.
Thank you for the wonderful questions. I'm sure reading the report.
Does councillor want a five-minute break before we jump into the rest of the topic? Would that be helpful? Five-minute reset, thank you. Welcome back to community law. We're on item two, development cost charges. Another really light and fun topic for Tuesday afternoon.
Thank you. My name is Janosel Nishka, Director of Community Planning. I'll try to make this as exciting as possible. Today, we're going to talk about development cost charge and building permit fee structure for accessory dwelling units, or as we call them ADUs, and multi-unit flex units, or as we call them LUFUs.
I was hoping that you were going to say.
So maybe we'll start with just a quick description of what ADUs and LUFUs are. Accessory dwelling units, according to our zoning bylaw, are secondary suites within single-family homes, carriage homes, so detached accessory dwelling units, as well as in duplexes in some cases. And duplexes kind of fall in both categories depending on the fire separation that's used. But it's purely a technical exercise in terms of duplexes. You can think of them as secondary suites in a duplex essentially. And then multi-unit flex units, or LUFUs, are lockout suites inside a townhouse. It could be inside an apartment. And again, if a different fire separation is used, it could be a two unit. And essentially, in an apartment building, it would be an apartment with two entrances and then a door in between that would allow the occupant to either use it as a tube-lung unit or a single unit. In neither of these cases, these units are stratified, so they form same title. And hence, they are a form of rental units, so a form of rental stock. So just a little bit of a background, back in 2016, the district made bylaw changes to our DCC bylaw and our fees and charges bylaw to exempt accessory dwelling units. At that point, we didn't have multi-unit flex units in place yet, to exempt them from building permit fees and DCCs. The intention was for this exemption to be somewhat temporary in nature so that we would come back in the future and revisit whether we continue the program or not. And we were able to write that in the fees and charges bylaw when it came to building permit fees. However, we were not able to put that expiry date in the DCC bylaw, and the province wouldn't allow that. The bylaw has to be approved by the province. So today, the exemption for building permit fees has run out as of end of January, and the DCC exemption continues because it's written in the bylaw, and to take it out would actually have to change the bylaw. We took stock of the permits we've received in those three years, and it looks like the exemption value for DCC was in the range between $700,000 and $1 million. And the building permit fee exemption was in the range of $300,000 to $500,000. It's all dependent on the size of the unit, and we didn't go really detailed into the, you know, what each permit application had in terms of size, so these are general estimates. In the report, there's a little snapshot of the kind of permits we've issued in the last five years. So really, 2014 and 15 as the years before the exemption were in place, and then 2016 to 18 when the exemption was in place. We can see that in all categories, there have been increases. So both carriage houses and secondary suite installations in existing buildings have gone up. And we had a big boost in new houses with a suite in it. However, we suspected that was largely to do with a few big subdivisions that were being developed at that time, and so the numbers have petered off since then. This chart does not include multi-unit flex units, although we know it issued permits for some. It's really a handful, as these are a new thing in the district. So the total number of suites permitted, sorry, not just suites, but ADUs and LUFUs is 242. And the LUFUs are really a handful in that calculation. So the question is, do we continue this program? And to answer that question, we need to know, has it had a positive impact? Well, that's difficult to determine. We had changing market conditions in the housing market between 2014 and today. So when the changes came in, it was also the general market, construction market was ramping up. We see increases in permits across the board. So that sort of taints the analysis, as well as the fact that the district around the same time is going through a lot of changes in our regulations. So we've allowed the suites more broadly. We've reduced some of the location requirements that were in place before, so we made it easier for people to build suites and carriage houses. So that also taints the analysis whether this has had a positive impact or not. Anecdotally, we hear from people that, yes, some people have, certainly were making the applications because it was less expensive. And the cost of DCC fee and building permit fee per application is around $5,000 to $6,000. So, you know, if you're, if you have an existing house and you're putting in a suite, that might cost you $10,000 to $20,000. Having to pay $5,000 to $6,000 all of a sudden is a considerable amount of money. So we know that financially, it's easier to create ADUs today from this permitting perspective than it were before these exemptions. And we think the biggest bang for the buck is in those secondary suites that are inside existing buildings because the overall cost is much smaller. And we actually want people, some of these suites are suites that people have decided to legalize. So that's another incentive for people to come forward and legalize their suites. So I'm being fairly brief, right to the recommended approach. So now that we've got building fees, again, applicable, DCCs continue as exempt. We are applying building permit fees and DCCs to multi-unit flex units because they're not exempt. In the bylaws, those basically would be calculated at the same rate as an apartment, it's per square meter. which is per square meter. The recommended approach is to continue the full exemption for DCCs and have a reduced building permit fees for those secondary suites in existing buildings, as they have the least cost associated with installation. They're usually undertaken by homeowners, so they're not, you know, not part of a bigger development. And so that $5,000 to $6,000 could represent a significant challenge. We recommend that for new carriage homes and suites in new buildings, so if someone's building a house with a suite in it, that we would charge a moderate DCC and a reduced building permit fee. We also recommend including DCCs in subdivisions to be automatically applied. So if somebody's doing a subdivision right now, we just charge them per unit for that primary dwelling unit. And then it depends whether somebody builds a suite or not. I think if we apply it automatically, then that actually provides an incentive for someone to go ahead later on, or for the developer to pre-build those suites. And then in terms of multi-unit flex units, we recommend applying the same rationale to those as new carriage homes and suites in new buildings, because they are essentially the same thing, but in multi-family context. And so the point today is to get counsel's feedback on this approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I've been struggling with the mud thing, and now we've got the MOFU thing. And so I just, I'm curious where planning gets its names from, but we don't have to talk about that today. But Mike, when I read this report, and last term we talked about it, it was just anecdotal, and we were concerned that these exemptions were going into units that were being used for short-term rentals. And I don't know, has there been any attempt to correlate the applications we've received that have been exempted versus the information we have around where the Airbnb and short-term rental units are?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, we've done some very basic analysis. We had a Quest University student working with us for a little bit, and so we've done some of that on-the-ground work, looking at some of the reports we have about short-term rentals and looking at the permits that we've issued. There is some correlation. I think that's an enforcement piece. Wherever we, the district decides to go with what we do with the short-term rentals, I think we'll clarify, you know, if we make changes, if we have to make changes at that time, then that would be warranted. I think at this point, we're assuming that if we enforce a bylaws, all of these units would be part of our rental stock.
But just to avoid the aggravation of somebody doing that when we're talking about now extending a program, I mean, have we thought about, and I don't even know if it's possible actually, but yes, you get the exemption, you qualify under these criteria, but if this thing goes short-term within a certain period of time, we want the money back, or we want you to pay the fees and enforce a system for that. I feel like just added taxes, but I know that that's not always possible. Have we looked at anything like that to just ensure that the ones we are exempting actually are ending up in rental stock?
That's a good point. We could look at that. The reason we haven't looked at it yet is because it would mean additional staff resources for us to administer those. So there would have to be some sort of an agreement, and might have to be registered on the property as a covenant. It's certainly possible. And when we come back, depending on counsel's direction, that's something that we could look at.
Caution to, I don't know that we can write a DCC bylaw that would achieve that intent and get it past the inspector as well. It's certainly unclear whether or not we can do that with the DCC exemptions anyway. And getting the money back again would be tricky.
Thank you. I have similar questions, I guess, to Counsel Ray. And as I was thinking about this, I felt that our, I hope that our short-term rental review is going to address that. I don't think that we should keep the building of units. We can try to do some other things to adjust who occupies those units. And as I thought about holding it for the, trying to tie that together with the short-term rental, I was thinking about when this happens and then the property change hands and covenants, and it got really complex. But I think that we should do what we can to continue to grow the stock. And I think that your approach is quite balanced to make sure that we're still making it a beneficial thing to do to add to the stock through the different ways that you've got up there. So I quite like it, and I do think that there's room for improvement with the short-term rental, but I think it's its own thing. Let's make sure we have spots that people can rent, short or long-term, however we decide that that goes. But I don't think going to discourage some construction rental, potential MOFOs. So I think this is a good approach.
Counselor.
Much like Counselor referred, I like what I saw in the report and the direction that it's going in. Maybe a different conversation, but I think it's worth shining some light on it. The cost of getting permits and all of this paperwork through Municipal Hall, it's not super significant until we get in a scenario where it takes a really long time to get from the point of paying the fees to actually getting in the ground. So developers and builders, the longer it takes in that period, exponentially, the more expensive a project gets. So should we be looking at that issue hand in hand with this, the length of time that it takes for builders to get from initially making contact with Municipal Hall to actually getting nails in boards?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, timing is always an issue for construction. Our actually timing for the smaller projects like single detached homes with suites or suites or accessory dwelling units such as carriage homes, it's pretty good right now. I think it's at or below eight weeks. So it's the bigger projects that are taking longer. And just another clarification, when you apply for a building permit, you just pay a processing fee, I think it's $90, and then you don't pay the actual building permit fee until we issue the permit and you're picking it up. And so that means as soon as you pay the fee, the bigger fee, then you're off to, you can start building right away. So I think the issue, the timing issue was really painful a couple of years ago, but we've sort of adjusted our process to respond to that. So it's still, it takes a significant amount of time for the big projects, but not so much for the smaller ones.
And just one more anecdotal thing that I'll share. I know a number of people who have large lot properties in Squamish, and they have done something to densify their property. And for the most part, people that I'm in contact with, the end result has been positive, and most of those units have ended up being long-term resident units as opposed to short-term rentals. So those people that I know who have gone through this type of development process have done with success.
Well, that's good to know.
Counselor.
Thanks for the report and the proposed approach. I think it aims to balance well what it is that we're trying to get in terms of, it's really impressive the number, in terms of the number of new units that have come online and appreciate the efforts to try and daylight some of the perhaps otherwise illegal suites that we might have. So I think especially that first line in terms of secondary suites in existing buildings, I feel really comfortable with that being continued full exemption. My question is around whether we elevate the new carriage homes on existing properties up to that level as well, in an effort to try and support that kind of infill and development. And just posing that more as a question, I guess.
The reason why we proposed a slightly distinct approach was that because financial barriers are likely less when you're building a new carriage home, because the investment is so much higher than building it within existing, you know, building. But in, I think the intention is even at a moderate level, it would be very insignificant in terms of the overall size of the project. But we could look at including them as well. The rationale in our report was based on, you know, how do we make sure that the DCCs and building permit fees do not present a significant financial barrier? And I think they present the biggest barrier for those existing buildings and a lesser one for carriage homes.
Counselor, please.
Thank you. And I generally agree with what's on the screen here, except for the last one, why we would, wondering why we would reduce them in that particular circumstance. When we're talking about the MOFOs, which are typically sort of created in a new development, which usually involves rezoning. And it's kind of, from my perspective, it's part of the saleability of the rezoning, in other words, where the developer's selling the rezoning to council. This is what we're going to offer, and there's going to be some lock-off suites, and so you have all the advantages of this rezoning include these potential rental suites. So to me, it's kind of locked in, and then to turn around and give them a break for doing that, maybe just doesn't necessarily follow, because it's kind of part of what they got the zoning on, and we need to give them a break. And I, once again, I'll pose that as a question too. I don't want to discourage them, and I'm not sure that once they've committed to it in the rezoning, that we are discouraging by charging just the normal fees.
Through you, Mayor. Certainly, I think the ability is there for developers rather than individual homeowners to build these and pay for the DCCs. The reason why we recommend this approach is because, you know, it's an issue of fairness. If we apply a reduction to all other secondary dwelling units, then it would only be fair to apply to multi-unit flex units. And these sometimes could be in duplex buildings as well. So it could be smaller developers building it. It certainly provides an incentive for developers to do that, and we know that that's becoming more and more of an interest because of the way the markets are working. People are looking for mortgage helpers even in the apartment dwelling context. So just from a fairness perspective.
Counselor.
So a couple of things. I mean, notwithstanding improvements we've made in that process, as I have heard from people, that the uncertainty around the process and timelines is their sort of bigger barrier. And so, you know, I do kind of wonder whether we're better off maybe even increasing the fees, but providing a guaranteed, you know, you'll have a yes or no answer if there's no variances in supply within two weeks or whatever it is. And if we actually see that be more of an incentive, I guess I'll stop. You know, have we looked at that at all as an alternative to decreasing fees?
And just for clarity, Counselor Pendleton, are you speaking of single-family homes or larger developments?
I think I'm speaking of like accessory dwelling units and so on.
On a single-family home property?
Yeah.
We haven't looked at that just because I think the changes we've made, we hear less and less from people that they're frustrated with the timelines, especially if you look at, you know, some of the other jurisdictions in and around this area. Eight weeks or less than that, I think, is reasonable. Oftentimes, when somebody submits an application, you know, we get to it and then we find out that, oh, we need this and this and that, because we don't do any detailed review. That tends to prolong the process. But the, Counselor, your question is, we haven't looked at that.
Okay. And my other, you know, and maybe I missed this in the report, but I understand, you know, we're, we have a shortage of long-term rental availability. It's not clear to me that more suites solves that problem. And did I miss that, or do we have a sense that we actually have a shortage, a simple shortage of suites? Or it could be theoretically just that we focus on enforcement instead, deal with the long-term rental issue sufficiently by focusing on enforcement, and we don't necessarily need to incentivize more suites at this point?
Well, we know that we're significantly short in our rental stock, and secondary suites and accessory dwelling units represent, they don't provide a solution. It's part of the solution. What we know is that that's probably the fastest way for the district to facilitate the creation of DC units, because it doesn't require us to put effort in, sort of, in provision of DC units, is us essentially getting out of the way, and then a wide array of individual homeowners and developers are building these units. So if you look at it over the three-year period, 240 units, that's quite a lot in our context.
And I can't put the exact numbers together in my head, but as I recall, that's not too far off. I think the growth we've seen in the increase of short-term rentals, and we heard, I think during those discussions, people saying like, I need a way to subsidize my mortgage and so on. I want flexibility, I'm just not comfortable with the Landowner Tenet Act. And so, again, that connection to me between more suites and more long-term rental, I guess I'm not quite seeing that hard cause-effect at this point.
Yeah, it's certainly an enforcement issue. We're not actively, we're not actively pursuing short-term rentals at the moment in the suite context. We're responding to complaints, and, you know, we know that we have a very large segment of the short-term rentals in Squamish, and probably a good portion of those are accessory dwelling units. And that's something that we need to solve, but we're trying to isolate this. This is simply how we facilitate this form of housing, and I think we're going to have to deal with the use when we deal with short-term rentals.
Okay. I know we've sort of, there's a forego income when we do this, so it's estimated between $700,000 and $1 million. What's our overall DCC and building permit revenue?
When it comes to building permit revenue, it's about, last year, I think it was up to $1.5 million for one year. In terms of DCCs, I'm not sure.
I don't know, so through the chair, but, I mean, the DCC model itself is, the total project cost in their own, there's somewhere above $90 million. So.
If that's not what we're going in, in DCCs.
No, but in terms of its impact on the model, that gap in the model, it's a small percentage point of.
It's quite narrow, but on the building permit fees, it's a higher percentage.
Correct, yes.
And then following on both, well, all the comments around how do we preserve some of these suites for long-term rental, and the challenge of putting in covenants and that sort of thing, is why with new builds in developments, would we not covenant those Because we're doing a big rezoning and we have the opportunity to put them in. So if we're going to waive the fees, which, you know, all fees eventually get passed on to the person buying the house, so there's an affordability issue there, and you don't think developers eat these costs anyway. But if you get the suite and we're already doing a rezoning, why would we covenant all those if they have to be long-term rental? And then there's enforcement issues through the short-term rental bylaw if we discover that they're not. But also, we are asking developers to covenant affordable rental and purposeful rental that they're doing in their developments, and we've got a method to somehow track that that is being used for the intended purpose. So why wouldn't we do that if it's here?
Through you, Mayor. It's certainly part of the short-term rental project to look at how do we go forward with rezonings. It will mostly affect multi-unit flex units, because we don't have a lot of single-family subdivisions, you know, that are in the rezoning stage. But that is a good point, and it's part of our short-term rental project. Otherwise, we would be looking at essentially getting into an agreement with each one of these landowners that they are installing a suite or building a carriage house. And I think that's a lot of, that would be a lot of administrative effort.
But I sort of, I want to incentivize people with existing properties to add this use. And then, as you said, we freed up the ability for people to do that through building changes and that. through zoning changes and that sort of thing. But I'm not sure I want to, I think that adding this type of secondary suite and lockoff suites is just something that people have to do to get the affordability there to hit the market right. So I'm not sure why I want to subsidize developers in that regard. I think it's just a good way to build now. If we're looking at, you know, our OCP is looking at different housing forms. You know, the strategic plan is asking developers for different housing forms. So if we expected a new development, whether it's single-family or multifamily, I'm not sure I see waiving the fees at this time. For those ones, makes sense to me.
Just to clarify, are we talking about multi-unit flex units then?
Yeah, the new single-detached subdivisions with ADUs. I agree that we should charge some DCCs automatically. They should pay for that. And then the new multi-unit flex units, I think they should pay the fees. And then we should like a covenant in those ADUs and MUFU's that are new builds to keep them in a long-term rental.
Yeah, I guess the proposal post is more of an incentive. We do have developers committing to, you know, so many secondary units, multi-flex units within developments. But I have a sense that if there's an incentive, and a DCC incentive is, could be a big one, that developers would go beyond that because it's also an attractive, an attractive product for those people who are going to be buying these units. So it's a win-win. It's a win position that it could, you know, a single project, let's say, that has 50 apartments, if even half of those would have been built to accommodate an ADU or a MUFU, now that's a significant amount. Developers always ask us, do you have any incentives for us to do that? And right now, we don't.
Well, I think incentive is, they get the rezoning. I think that's kind of where we have to come from in these things. If we think this is a good thing, then when these developments show up for the rezoning, we start insisting on a certain percentage. And we have already some policy around that with respect to sub-market bundles and purpose-built bundles and so forth. And this just might be an add-on to that, so it locks in. And I think that's kind of where I was coming from in my last comment. Why do we have to then turn around and reduce the fees when they're doing something or providing something that they put on the table to get the rezoning?
I could just respond to that. And so the incentive here is to go beyond that. We secure a certain amount of rental units in a development. And then sometimes we secure a certain amount of lockoff suites. But I think if there's an incentive to go beyond it, so the developers would have to pay for those rental units full DCCs. It's the lockoff suites that wouldn't figure it out. I think that there is more and more, the way the market is going, is there's going to be more and more traction for developers to go beyond what they secure and build more, build in these as options for people into their developments beyond what they commit to us.
Well, and I agree with the mayor. I mean, it's a market point. I think it's something that is attractive to a purchaser, to a certain group of purchasers who either want it for in-law or want it for a mortgage helper. There it is. You can buy it. It's already installed. It's all done. You don't have to do anything further. So it's basically to the developer's advantage, I think, to provide a certain group of those in a development, in a large development. I mean, the ones I've seen, you know, take Waterfront Landings, for example. And to me, that's a market point. The developer might have a different view of it. But to me, that makes some of those units more sustainable to purchasers if they know they've got a built-in mortgage helper.
Absolutely. And the same rationale applies to single-family homes though with suites as well. It's a mortgage helper. So the reason why we recommend is that we're just recommending the same approach. We don't see a distinction in terms of sellability. The benefit to the landowners there, our point is how we facilitate these across the spectrum. But yes, developers are more likely to be able to afford that.
Do you have a minute? Two minutes? Yeah, just so I can. Sure. Because I'm feeling confused too. So I just, do you mind if we do two minutes? I'm going to talk this out. Okay. Okay, do you have two minutes, please?
Thanks. All right, we're back in committee of the whole. Am I handing it back to you, Mr. Valens?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess to just summarize maybe what we've been trying to get input from council on specifically to the multi-unit flex units is whether council wants to subsidize or incentivize the production of DC units beyond where the market would be creating them. So whether there's value in going further than what the market will dictate or not.
That's a question I have for council. Is that our first?
Another question. Thank you. When these are acquired or committed to through a rezoning process, would it be possible that this could be structured so that when it's done at that time, it'd be a different fee, a different fee structure? Or a different application with DCCs? Or I don't know the.
Mr. Valens?
You predicted our next sort of question. Now, it's very difficult to do that. The DCCs are collected at subdivision or building permit. They cannot be collected at rezoning. So that, the DCC bylaw has to stand free from the rezoning application. It would be very difficult to try and make DCCs contingent on certain applications. The DCC bylaw has to stand and speak for itself.
Okay, yeah, thank you. We were just discussing it sort of from two different scenarios overall. I was trying to get an understanding if there's somebody who are going to be treated through some form. Apparently not the DCCs, slightly different than the other ones in addition. Thank you.
I'll go to you, Counselor Reese. But the report doesn't give, what's a reduced fee? What's a moderate fee? Like, the report doesn't sort of give council any idea of what that looks like.
Yes, and so we didn't go that extra step because we didn't know whether council was interested in pursuing the, you know, extension of the program. We would come back with a more detailed analysis. But when I say moderate rates, you know, it's probably half of what would be required under the previous bylaw that required ADUs to pay DCCs. So we would probably go down some $20,000 to $100,000.
Counselor Reese?
Yeah, I guess where I'm at is I draw a distinction between renoing or adding to an existing building. So that would be a carriage house on an existing developed lot or a suite in an existing home. And I'm happy to incentivize those as we've done in the past. I think with the new stuff, I have less of an appetite for that because I think it will be sort of locked into the marketability of the units and the rezoning application. So we'll either get it to our satisfaction in the rezoning application or if the developer wants to provide more, then that will be because there's a market advantage to doing that. And so I'm less inclined to give any kind of relief in those circumstances. And I just frankly, I'm not convinced that us lowering DCCs or building permit fees in new construction scenarios is going to be the thing that prompts a developer to put that in. I think in the overall scheme of things, first of all, it's a relatively small part of a larger dollar number to construct the unit. And secondly, I go back to, I think the driving thing, from my understanding of the development industry, the driving thing is going to be the sellability. And if somebody's got a, the package is there or it's all done, it's nicely tied up, it's all in there, they don't have to do anything, they just move in and get somebody into the suite, then I think there's an advantage for that for a certain level of the market. So I don't know that we have to reduce our fees in those circumstances.
I kind of want to challenge that and then.
I might be doing the same thing.
Okay.
Well, the market forces are, I would agree. People, this is a marketable piece. So if we can give them a push, instead of just the market saying we like these in half the homes, if that gets it in two quarters of homes, we have a deeper inventory that we can control through things like a short-term rental. We've got a huge, we've got a huge gap in the housing mark, in the rental market. And I think that the more units we can get built, that is just going to help us. So if we, I agree, we don't need to full subsidize on it. We could also put the subsidization out there covenant, which I think is a disincentive potentially because we're going to be able to, they're already, if it's being short-term rented, they're already in a breach of some regulation at this point, so I don't really need to add layers of regulations and also ticked or something on down, you know, down the line. But I think we should continue to make sure we get the maximum amount of these units built in the new builds, knowing that they're already considering building some, which is great, but less, more is better than some. And we can quantify that more precisely. But that's where I'm coming at with this.
Counselor Beno?
I guess where I am is, you know, I fear that regardless of what we say, if we incentivize suites on the assumption that down the road, we can do something with regulation to make sure they become long-term, I think we're just setting ourselves up for a battle. I think a lot of people won't catch that and will start using it at this point in time for Airbnb and then will be quite upset if they're told they can't do that in the future. So for me, I'd prefer, you know, if we're going to offer incentives right upfront, somehow make them contingent on some sort of long-term rental commitment. And then the other piece, like, I have heard the feedback. And intuitively as well, especially if I'm, you know, I'm renovating my own house, I'm right at the edge of my finances, certainty is probably more important to me, I think, than, you know, the fact that I might not get a couple thousand dollars reduction in fees. Certainty in timelines, certainty in my expenses just intuitively seems more valuable. So I would like to personally, in terms of considering incentives, if we decide we want to incentivize long-term rental, to see a bit more evidence that, you know, some sort of guaranteed timelines or something is not a better option than a reduction in fees.
That's a really good point. And maybe that's something we can look at. And if we come back to council with the proposed bylaw changes, we could bring back some of that precise information about how long it takes and then whether we should do something about it.
Certainly, I think you've heard that on a few fronts. So it's probably a part of the decision-making process for a few councils. I'll come back to you. I suppose for me, this whole conversation begs the question about whether we should just be making changes towards going back. So in the same way that we're requiring new builds to include, you know, 30% of parking spots have to have access to an electric charger and 100% need to be wrapped in. So if we're doing a new single-detached subdivision, 30% of those homes need to have a built accessory dwelling unit and 100% of them need to be wrapped in. Like, we're working at an incentive level, but maybe we need to go, we're redoing the zoning bylaw anyway. If we want to encourage this type of bill, shouldn't we just demand this type of bill through our zone?
Certainly, we can look at that. And I would recommend that we leave that for the zoning bylaw update.
I think, I suppose what I'm saying, Mr. Valens, is that I could accept a short-term approach on this if we examine what we should be doing to the zoning bylaw to encourage the type of buildings that we want that has the rental unit. And then for me, as this comes back, we do need to look at a way to preserve some of these units for long-term rental. So maybe you get certainty on timeline and you can use it for whatever you want. But I don't know, maybe you get the discount, waive the fees, but you've got to put in long-term rental for a minimum of five years. So I'd like to just see some options come back with the incentives. Counselor Beno?
I was hearing around the table that we're so hyper-aware of the short-term rental and the challenges of that. And we are doing a review of that. Should this perhaps waive or be worked on in conjunction with what that policy is going to be going forward? Because we're making some assumptions that that study's maybe not going to, that process isn't necessarily going to support. So we're close on the timeline. We're in process sort of with that, I don't know. So should we maybe be holding on that? Because it ties together, or holding on this because it ties so closely together with that? And this is part of that discussion when it comes back? Because we're operating on some assumptions, I believe.
Certainly, it could be aligned with that process. Time is money in this case. And that project, you know, it's a big project that we're not expecting to finish till the end of this year. So it'd just be a little longer than doing some changes to the bylaw now and recovering some of the fees.
We need to update this one now?
Well, if we decided we need to update it. Right now, the DCCs are continuously being examined. They're being flexed on multi-unit flex units. And building permit fees are now being flexed on everything. So we could continue that program for the rest of the year. Or we could make changes before the short-term rental project wraps up. And then maybe as a result of that, there are other changes.
You want to follow?
Yeah, I mean, as long, if this is part of that, of the both of those long-term projects and this is bridging us to get there, then I'm comfortable with this, knowing that it's imperfect, which we've done consciously, we've done a few things that we've sort of bridged under that, you know, under that pretext. But I think this is a good approach and walks the line. But we will need to make sure that this aligns with both of those pieces when they come forward. But if they're going to run with nothing until then, I think this is a good balance.
Counselor Reese?
Yeah. Going back to the mayor's point about looking at the zoning bylaw, I think that's a good idea because I think there are some assumptions and I've been making some of them in this discussion. And one of the advantages of looking at the zoning bylaw to deal with some of these things, for example, the number of these boohoo's that we might want to see in a development, is that we will be consulting with the stakeholders and developers in that process, I would expect, and get their feedback. I, just as I'm sitting here, I mean, I tend to agree with comments that we want to encourage more of these things. I'm just not convinced that lowering fees is the thing that is the trigger point on new construction. You take a building that's going to cost $400,000 to build and a few thousand dollars for an extra DCC payment, I'm not sure that that will reflect in a saving to the purchaser. I think the market will set the price to the purchaser and it may just mean more money in the developer's pocket, right? A bigger margin. So I just, I just don't see that that's a real advantage there. And I think we're just, in those circumstances, giving it away. I think if we want to promote some of these things, the way to do it is to mandate them the way we mandated other things in the development process. And that would be a matter of consultation. I think that would be the important part of including the zoning bylaw. If we want to go with something like this in the short-term, fine. But I think the long-term solution to this is going to be probably the zoning bylaw.
Any other comments, counsel? From the first time this was brought to the council, the whole goal was to create long-term rental. And I can't say, and I don't think staff can say whether it has or hasn't. I think we have some anecdotal evidence. And so my concern in continuing with these incentives And so my concern in, in continuing with these incentives is that unless we have a way to either protect the long-term rental, or figure out what's happening to those rentals once they go off the market, that I'm probably going to have a hard time supporting the incentives going forward. If we are going to bring a bylaw forward, I'd rather see it come forward for existing buildings, so that we continue to encourage illegal suites to get sort of out into the light, that's a life safety issue for me, and encouraging homes to put in a carriage home or an accessory dwelling unit. I'm not sure right now that I'm supportive of the new builds, I'd like council to take care of that through the zonings and looking at the zoning bylaw long-term. But I think for existing homes, the incentives still make sense, although however we do with a short-term rental bylaw, we need a way to figure out where these are going, because if they all just keep going to the Airbnb market, I don't want to keep paying for that. So those would be my ten points. Any other comments for me? Is that enough to go with, or, I'm not sure we've reached a good consensus?
If I could just do line by line and...
Yeah. Maybe just show a hand, counsel, for as we go through this, line by line?
Okay.
Secondary suites in existing buildings, levels of support for that, should we try new carriage homes to that?
That's, that's never fun. Or you're thinking of moving it up to the whole exemption and...
Yeah. I'll support your proposal. Okay. Then new carriage, I'll come back to yours as a variation, I think, new carriage homes and suites in new buildings.
So going back to my point, I mean, it makes a difference to me whether it's an existing developed lot that a new carriage home shows up on next to a house that's been there for years, versus a whole new thing from the ground up. So that's, I guess, where we wanted to divide that into...
So the first bullet point should include secondary suites and carriage homes?
Adjacent to existing principal residences in part, I think, existing building.
So if we change that first bullet to include carriage homes, what's the level of support? All right. And then on the second bullet point, what's the level of support? That this is all new builds? Not seeing any hands?
All right.
New single-detached subdivisions, just applying the DCVs automatically, and new move-rooms in new buildings? All right. So that's pretty clear direction after that.
Okay, so just to clarify then, to summarize, the only thing we would come back with is the existing buildings, suites going in them, or carriage houses going in on existing lots?
But I think that the other pieces of feedback that you heard today were, what's the incentive in terms of a guaranteed timeline, and is that better than a financial one? And how do we start tracking where these suites are going, and what are our options for preserving them in the long-term rental? And whether that comes back as the, from the short-term rental bylaw, or from this one, or from the zoning bylaw, I think as we contemplate this bylaw, we should kind of know where staff want to have those discussions come forward. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Just to clarify, move-rooms is a building code term?
Well, I thought, we heard from you first.
Thanks, yours, that was a good discussion, appreciate it. Okay, next up, land development procedures, bylaw updates. So this is a requirement of updating our OCP, we've had to update this bylaw list. So there are some new elements that staff are asking us to contemplate today, and for those directions that they're, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Bailey.
Great. Hi, counsel, my name is Sarah McJanet, for those coming in from home. So today I'm presenting, as the mayor pointed out, a draft plan development procedures bylaw, for initial council review and consideration before we go ahead and bring it forward for informal meetings. So these are updates that are necessary and an implementation piece for us to align our development procedures and fees with the new Swamish OCP that was adopted in June of last year, and also to address some additional legislative pieces that have arisen since we last overhauled our procedures bylaw in 2013. So I just want to quickly reiterate the purpose and scope of the land development procedures bylaw, and then I'll walk through the specific proposed changes that we are proposing to align with the OCP. We want to take a little look at the delegated authorities within this draft bylaw, both those that exist kind of in our current procedures bylaw, and then what's being proposed as part of law 2632. We would like to take the opportunity to briefly discuss an opportunity to expand certain permit, delegated permit authorities. And finally, we'd like to point out a handful of fees and charges updates that we'd like to bring forward in tandem with this procedures bylaw. So rolling back the clock at the council planning 101 session at the start of the term, we introduced the existing land development procedures bylaw 2229. It's a legislative requirement, so wherever a local government has adopted an official community plan or a zoning bylaw, that local government must by bylaw define procedures that outline how an owner of land may apply for a limit to a planner bylaw or issuance of a permit. So since the fall, we've been working on the update to align the procedures. Primarily, the biggest piece, as you'll, as we'll walk through, is incorporating them in development approval information areas, and the new development permit areas, and other housekeeping. So this is your chance for a little preview and to discuss them, as I said, before we move forward. So in terms of overall scope and contents of the bylaw, this is kind of like a table of contents. So the bylaw works through general application requirements, it moves through development approval information, it touches on signposting and notification for applicants, all of the requirements for procuring notification, it aligns the zoning OCP and land use contract amendment application process, as well as all the other permit applications. It addresses inactive and subsequent applications, and then also covers also primary approvals, taking of security, strata conversions that are addressed and delegated in part to the approving officer subdivisions, and then there's some new content around liquor and cannabis licensing recommendations. And then, of course, for any delegated authorities, we also must by bylaw outline procedures for reconsideration of any delegated decisions for council. So the intention is not to go through all of these sections today, I wanted to focus on just the notable changes that have been made, and then we can pull out any aspects of the bylaw that council would like to discuss. So high level, the major updates that have been proposed in the draft bylaw 2632, just kind of five key amendment areas. I have a couple of detailed slides around a few of these items, but I'm just going to sort of fly through these generally, and then touch on those momentarily, some of the specific ones momentarily. So as I mentioned, we've established development approval information areas within the OCP, and so this is probably the most significant update, and I'll cover off those in a separate slide. We've also tweaked the procedures around land use contract amendments and terminations, because now through the legislation, we know that land use contracts will be terminated by 2024, that's a form of contract agreement that came about in the 1970s. And so there's a few things that we need to be doing for land use contract areas. We've also aligned the procedures bylaw, as well as the fees and charges to reflect a number of new development permit areas within our OCP. So we've overhauled development permit area one for protection of the environment, we've got a new development permit area for flood hazard, as we know, so we've aligned the procedures in that respect. We also have touched on temporary use permit delegations, I'll walk through that in a little bit more detail, but essentially, right now, under our existing bylaw, council has delegated the authority to approve temporary use permits of less than 185 square meters, around 2,000 square feet. For any, for any type of temporary use permit that is, but right now there's an exclusion for liquor, any proposal that involves liquor licensing. And in this bylaw, we've proposed to add an exclusion for cannabis retail, as well as primary sale of tobacco, e-cigarettes, vaporizers and associated vaporizer products, not projections of... And then in addition, we've added liquor and cannabis license referrals and accommodations as a delegation, and I'll touch a little bit on this in a couple of slides. So for the development approval information areas, as noted, we've got six prescribed areas in the community plan, where the district has stated we may require submission of development approval information to ensure that we have sufficient information and documentation prior to approvals to assess the impacts of development or activity. So the procedures bylaw, what we've proposed, those amendments, is intended to codify the procedures for development approval information areas. I'm sorry that the text is a little bit light on those colored circles, but essentially, development approval information areas are assigned to areas that may be subject to natural hazard risk due to flood or debris flow hazard, or areas that might be subject to geotechnical hazards, so hazard due to rockfall, landslide, or steep slopes over 25%. Also for natural environment, these are areas that, where we want to assess the impact on environment, so impact to aquatic areas, marine riparian wetlands, or terrestrial, environmentally sensitive areas, habitat. We've also established a development approval information area for lands that are in proximity to railway. And so as stated in the OCP, it's a 300-meter proximity to the main, the principal main line, or a thousand meters buffer to the freight rail yard. This is a practice that is becoming more prevalent across Canada, sadly since lack may antique, but there's a lot of good development guidance that's coming from the rail industry that we are, especially for communities that are in proximity to rail and fill and kind of revitalization. Excuse me. We also have a development approval information area for views, protecting views and solar impact, and that's been assigned or designated for the downtown area, and then also traffic impact. So this is an area where we wanted to provide a little bit more guidance and get more information to assess the nature of, of development on these things. So the procedures bylaw outlines that applicants are required to provide the information that the district considers relevant to the specific application. Development approval information must be provided in line with specific terms of reference, where we have established terms of reference. Currently, right now, on our land development webpage, you'll see, we already have terms of reference for flood hazard assessments, for qualitative, or for risk assessments in debris flow areas, Chi-Pai. We also have terms of reference that are already established for site bioinventory for environmentally sensitive areas, environmental duty areas. And where no pre-specified terms of reference exist or have not yet been developed, the app, there's a, the procedures bylaw outlines how the applicant must confirm and supply written terms of reference for acceptance by the district, and so we'll look through that. Development approval information is prepared and provided at the applicant's expense, that's actually so in the legislation. So for council's awareness, we are looking to complete terms of reference for traffic, for views and solar, and for railway proximity to establish kind of more of a, and codify kind of what we're looking for. As you know, every development is different, and so we will apply best judgment through the director to work through with the applicant the extent of information that's required. And so, moving ahead, for the development permit delegations, this is the next sort of substantive piece that we've amended going forward. This table shows existing development permits on the left that are delegated to the general manager for approval or refusal in blue on the left, and then what is being proposed through bylaw 2632 is in red on the right. So starting with these top rows here, these are technical development permits. So what we're proposing in bylaw 2632 is to fully delegate to the director of community planning, approval or refusal of development permits for environmental protection. This is under development permit area one. Under the old DP, it was development permit area one for environmental protection, and development permit area 11 for riparian. So that's kind of the old, and then you see the new on the right. And so this is a broader delegation for any activities or works that require a development permit for environmental protection, or for flood protection. The exception to this is that where any proposal is bringing forward a request for any kind of variance, so the case of riparian areas and wetlands, if a proposal comes forward requesting any kind of variance to the streamside protection enhancement area, for example, the, the authority to consider that permit would remain with council. And as you can see, I've just extracted a part of the procedures bylaw in the white box below, that, that's sort of across the board. For any development permit that includes a variance to either our zoning bylaw, or sign bylaw, or subdivision to not control bylaw, the authority to consider that application would remain with council. And that's pretty standard to see that, and that's based around our resolution. So underneath here, for clarity, Sarah?
Yeah. Is it an application for just a DP A1 or two, or is it a DP that also gets delegated?
Yeah. So on the top, we're just talking about those technical DPs, but that, that also includes variance piece. And so in the schedule to the bylaw, where you see the specific delegation authority laid out, for example, for development permit area one, it specifies sort of all works and activities required to be A1, except where a variance exists. But if you go back to the, to the parent part of the bylaw, where it talks about development permits, generally speaking, that delegation, there's 11.2 is the clause that sort of overlays all of it. So any, any permit, any development permit that's coming forward with a variance, as it's stated right now, would go to council.
But if I come forward with a DP for form and character in the DP area one?
Yeah.
The director can approve the DP area one, would the DP really come to council? Would you do this?
For the, yeah, it's, there are multiple development permit areas, as you know, that sort of apply, so I'll, I'll get into more of the detail around those. I think simply to say, we do have permits for development permit area one and two that come forward as standalone permits, they're, they're all being triggered for those development permit area designations, and they don't involve any kind of form and character guidelines. So in, in that way, those could be issued and definitely, those could be approved or refused by the director, and issued or refused, just to sort of as standalone permits. Okay, so let's go into the first...
Can I ask you a question?
I just want to know that we're just talking about specific DP A1. This is not a combo deal, this is on just DP A1 or DP A2, the director can approve. We're not talking about that overarching multiple permits under one application. So I think Sarah's got by that we're just talking about individual standalone DP A1 and DP A2.
So for form and character development permit areas, so...
I've created confusion. Counselor Hayes?
Sorry, so very often these things come in close. So if something came with a form and character request for a permit, as well as a DP A1, across the counter like that, the director could approve DP A1, and we would only see the form and character?
You would see the full, kind of the permit, the holistic permit, that includes the form and character guidelines that would be coming forward to council, unless they're delegated as, as being proposed. as being proposed. But all of the guideline review that is happening for the technical guidelines around environment and flood protection would be reviewed by staff, and there'd be a recommendation basically coming forward by staff with those. There are, a lot of the permits that we, that we deal with are these combined permits. So there's form and character triggers as well as, as well as technical guidelines and triggers for environment and flood protection. Rather than be in a situation where for one single development, we're issuing sort of three different standalone permits, our practice has been to integrate those development, like those approvals as one, as one development permit. So in the OCP, it says that where development permit area one or two is triggered, those permits will be considered along with the form and character in tandem. Some of the issues that we've come across in the past is that changes to a form and character, site planning around a specific file, has direct implications to the impacts around environment, or has direct implications to the flood hazard mitigation for a project. So you, in the past, it's been really tricky to issue sort of individual permits that where the guidelines are not really being considered holistically in tandem. So in this case, applications that are coming forward where there are multiple, which is a form and character, those would be coming to council.
And so in our discussion, when we're looking at that, even though the director makes a recommendation on, say, DPA1 issues, we as a council would be able to go back and either accept that recommendation or not? And if it's purely delegated, then we don't even see it?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so at the bottom of this table, it shows the form and character development permit areas. So on the left, you can see under our existing procedures by law, the extent of delegation that is currently prescribed in bylaw 2229. Development permit area two for downtown Squamish, under the existing bylaw, council had delegated approval of standard buildings of 600 meters, or, sorry, 600 meters, square meters or less, or three stories or less, as well as site landscape and building and structure, minor works, so additions of 50 square meters or less, accessory buildings where they're being built for waste or recycling facilities, facade changes, signage, siting of exterior equipment, any kind of landscape amendments or changes, patios, cafes, community gardens, lighting, parks and place structures, those types of kind of more minor things. So that's as it stands right now in our existing bylaw. Under the new bylaw 2632, the proposal is to, for form and character, allow delegation for any amendment to an existing DP where there's no substantial alteration of form and character as prescribed in the existing permit. And then we've defined minor works for the form and character areas. So this includes additions, accessory buildings or structures. We haven't, we haven't sort of set it out as with a limitation. Our zoning bylaw sets out the maximum area for building, like overall principal buildings as well as accessory buildings and structures, so we've just let that sit in the zoning bylaw. And then we're continuing to propose delegation of facade alterations, repairs, repainting, placement of exterior equipment like solar devices, heating and cooling, also EV charging stations, those kinds of, that kind of structure, as well as landscape, signage, lighting, parks, patios, cafes, gardens, public garden installations, those kinds of things. So for the most part, you're seeing fairly similar form and character delegation. Insofar as the entire principal buildings are concerned, you can see that we've actually dropped the delegation of standard buildings and structures. We'd like to host some initial discussion with council today to gauge your interest in broadening the form and character delegations for more major projects and beyond what the minor things that are highlighted here. So I'd like to just provide a couple of initial considerations for council to think about, and then we can open up for some discussion. So as we bring forward updates to these procedures, there is an opportunity that's presented to talk about expanded delegation for select form and character DPs should council wish to consider some of these at this time. We have been looking really closely at delegation bylaws for communities across the province just to get a better sense of what communities are doing. Different communities have set up delegation to different degrees within their procedural bylaws. The common thread and rationale for delegating is to try and improve service delivery, try and streamline approvals and efficiencies for permits that are essentially meeting guidelines. And at the same time, this is all trying to balance the interests and desires of councils in their decision-making. We're a smaller community of, I think for 2018, we actually bought the UC stats, annual population estimates, where we've broken 21,000. I'll get that for council. So even though we're a smaller community, we can look across other communities of a similar size. However, we are on this, as you know, this growth trajectory. We've been seeing increasing levels of growth. So even though we're a smaller community, we can compare to other smaller communities, but if the workload is different, then that's, you know, something important to consider. So we did look back at the number of development permits that we've been issuing in the last two years. So in 2017, we processed 36 permits. Last year, we processed 37 permits. I'm still getting confirmation of what it looks like right now, is that less than sort of five or six permits were delegated per year. So we're still, a lot of the permits are coming before council. And since my time here in 2011, anecdotally, you know, we've definitely seen the number of permit applications increase, the timelines, and the council agenda is kind of getting fuller. So it's definitely a balancing act to efficiently, yet comprehensively review these applications while allowing enough time for strategic planning, and policy work, and all the rest. So the key council question that we have for you today is basically, at this time, would you like to consider expanding delegation authority to staff beyond the minor permits that we're talking about that are prescribed in the draft bylaw for form and character DPs? And if so, what approach might be best to take, to explore this? So on the right-hand side in the pink, you can see for delegated approvals, when we looked into a scan of how communities are typically delegating, some delegate the lion's share of form and character DPs, some councils continue to approve most of them. We can take an approach by which we designate certain permits by geographic area that council might want to continue to hold and consider closely, whereas in some areas, council might have a higher level of comfort and empower staff to do those, or to approve or refuse those permits. So in some communities, they basically look at geographic areas, so they're looking at maybe trying to streamline and allow greater delegation in revitalization areas, or where they're trying to move applications a little bit further, or in special heritage districts, those kinds of things, or designated zones, for example, like infill areas. We could also take an approach whereby we consider delegation authority by development type. So in this case, it might be delegating certain types of approvals, say, for example, multi-unit residential below a certain threshold. So some communities use number of units. A council might choose to delegate, you know, multi-residential projects with eight or 10 units or less, or that kind of thing, or by density. So for example, commercial, commercial development with a floor area ratio X. So there's different approaches. These are just presented kind of high level for your consideration. And then also, you could have a hybrid approach. So you can say, in a specific geographic area, council might want to consider delegating only certain projects, sort of smaller, small to midsize residential, for example. So to put this into our specific local context, applying a geographic approach, council could choose to delegate some form and character DPs for commercial, industrial, or multi-unit residential development. Perhaps one consideration might be allowing for that except in an area, except for in a certain designated areas of special interest or concern. For example, we could maybe anticipate council interest in Gateway Commercial Center, or some of our sort of key, high-profile downtown areas. We're just sort of, we're thinking about different ideas, but we're really interested in what council thinks. And as I said, council could also choose to take an approach with a certain development type, or setting a threshold. Today, we're.
Sarah, we have a hard stop at four.
Thank you.
Because we have to dial someone in, so we want to hear some comments.
Perfect.
Any more that you think council needs to see? If they've read their report, will they? Are they good?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll stop there on the delegated DP, and so I'll just move to the recommendation. Liquor and cannabis licensing recommendations are fairly straightforward, unless council wants to speak to those, and we can highlight those. I had a slide around the fees. We can move forward with the recommendation, which was essentially to, subject to input provided today, to bring forward updated bylaws, both through the procedures and the fees and charges. Hold on a minute.
Sorry that I have to.
That's okay.
Be short. So council, we probably put it to what, bypass four this Monday?
Yes, yeah, I'll just text the individual.
So direct questions in all context, just fly with it there. Do you have any questions or comments?
Question.
So being honest, really, with the delegated authority, it didn't seem to be used a ton in its current configuration. There was a portion of the challenge by the opponent, if they felt they wanted to challenge it. And I'm curious about, as we add more authority, I guess the general concept is that we're adding authority in places where we're very comfortable, but as a, as a council, how are you, how does the notification go from, you've approved this, and it's gone through, and is there a chance for input slash, I mean, I don't want to be challenging, or, we don't want an outcome that we don't, as a council, we want to make sure that we're getting outcomes that we would like. So how do we voice that, and how is that, like, what's the other side of that checking balance?
So a little bit about reporting back, or like, is there a key process from our side?
Yeah, essentially, but I don't want to, yeah.
Sorry, just to be clear, I mean, the response to that is, you don't, if it's delegated, you don't see, we can report back on what's been done, but your involvement in the process is nil.
Right. Until it's challenged by the opponent, in the current case, our involvement in the process is.
So if it's, if it's unchallenged, you would have no involvement in the review of process or decision at this point.
Good question.
Can I follow this one? So if in a, if at a point, the delegated, the person that's delegated to has, would like input, do they, do you decide, oh, like, is there a decision process where this can go through normal channels, or you step, step back from it because you feel like it's maybe almost meeting a fresh, the requirement, and they need to go through the council, or how is that?
No, it needs to be very clear. It's either delegated or it is not. It cannot be ambiguous. It needs to be clearly lineable, thorough.
There's no middle ground.
There is no, we're not comfortable with it, we can refer it to council. If it's delegated to staff, it must be dealt with by staff.
Right.
We can't say, oh, this one's tricky.
You guys have the heart.
It is or it is not.
Okay. Yeah.
Free me to add to that, the council's input would be through the policy, so the permits that would be delegated would have to meet all of the guidelines in order to qualify.
I understand.
So I do appreciate that this is specifically for development permits that would meet all the guidelines, all the guidelines in DPA. And I, my gut is that I would like to get there one day to have greater delegated authority. My hesitation is that these are all new DPA's. We don't know half, and there's a lot of shoulds in, like, they're much clearer than the ones we had before, but there's still a lot of gray area there. So I am definitely hesitant going into this without having seen how the DPA's have been used to me.
Race.
Slightly changing the subject a little bit, going back to the first slide of those information areas, the six information areas, what happens to that information? You send a developer out to do a study about something, information comes back. Is it just for staff's benefit in reviewing the zoning of the application? Is there some other place it moves?
Through the mayor, that application that comes in, typically you will see referenced within staff's analysis around for every zoning, for example, for flood hazard, that assessment is having direct impact on the review of the application, whether, you know, there's safer intended use and implications for siting. So it's, staff use it to provide review commentary and to request revisions and amendments and further mitigation. So it's basically part of that due diligence process. Through the mayor, just wondering if you're wondering about whether that information is public and publicly disseminated. Typically, anything that council is considering as part of the review for, like, through a public hearing process, would be made, would be made public.
We get those prior reports, but no cascade environmental, it's just.
But what if it's a delegated authority?
If it's, if it's delegated, we don't see it because we don't need to.
Still be public.
But it's still be public.
And if I just made add to Sarah's answer, some of that information might not, we might not be able to do anything about, let's say, a traffic study that identifies, oh, there's going to be issues over here, but you're allowed to put a certain amount of density. It'll just give district more information about planning in the future.
When you say it's public, how does it become public? And I know if it's coming to council on an application, then of course, it's on our agenda, but that's four days before we hear, or five days before we hear. So is it public before then, or what about if it's a delegated decision, is there some implication of it in some fashion?
The development approval information is required at the beginning of the application process, so typically you will see, like, the public would have an opportunity to review and ask questions about the development impact through, for example, the earliest opportunity would be, say, through public information meeting, or through sort of initial readings of a bylaw. So if it's part of a OCP or a rezoning application, you could see some of that quite early on in the process, and then through the public hearing documentation. Beyond that, the district is using it internally in its development.
Just last question to this point, but it would also go on the development showcase, for example, so when the application starts off, it usually appears there in some form. So this is that information that's been gathered more or less prior to that point. Would it become public at that time?
It's a balancing act. I don't think that every single technical report is being provided as part of the development approval information is showing up on the development showcase. Obviously, we're wanting the applicant, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible, but there are reams and reams of technical reports, so we do get into, just in terms of trying to administer all those files and things, but we do try and pass the applicant to provide basically a summary as well, highlighting all the, sort of the key technical parameters for the project as well.
Counsel, I understand, is there any other comments?
I see that there's a discussion of alignment with the new OCP. I'm wondering whether I could ask if we could assess whether we're ready to integrate I'm wondering whether I could ask if we could assess whether we're ready to integrate aligned with a couple of other items in the OCP, namely section 27, 27.2, first nations, culture and heritage, 27.10, heritage conservation, whether we're ready, given that we don't have a registry, so to speak, and there's work in progress on, on the information available to us. But then there's also the, with respect to view corridors, we don't really have a registry of those either. We kind of play it by ear to a certain extent. So, my question is whether those, specifically those two sections could be evaluated as where they can be integrated and include alongside those six categories you outlined in one of the earlier slides. I note here that in 27.10C, incorporate heritage assessment in development review. Where are we at? Are we able to proceed any further on that at this time? Thank you.
To Council Anderson's questions, I'll just touch on the view corridors firstly. So, I mentioned that we are intending to establish terms of reference for a number of those other development approval information areas. For view corridors, we have prescribed, you know, the, the initial criteria in the community plan, but there's more work that needs to happen in terms of being more specific about how, how we would like applicants to provide information around views, what views are important. We haven't, I think many years ago, there was probably a view, kind of a viewscape study that hasn't been done to sort of formally. So, these terms of reference that we're intending to undertake will help provide more guidance around undertaking the view and solar impact assessment. With heritage, some communities actually identify heritage as a, as a specific kind of criteria for development approval information. We didn't go that far within the OCP during development. As Council Anderson points out, there's some policy directing or making a recommendation around establishing a heritage registry, but we haven't kind of moved forward or actioned that in any way. We would look to council for direction in terms of priority. It hasn't been identified right now as part of the work plan to undertake that sort of as its own project. However, through development approvals, if we are aware of kind of heritage resources or values as part of a project, in past, we have basically requested applicants provide more information around that. So, that's an area that we could bolster.
Thank you.
So, unfortunately, I have to stop us there. So, staff, I'm wondering, we need about 45 minutes for our next piece, so can we bring this back next week or can we recess and we convene? I don't know if staff can stay later.
What's your take?
I'm, I'm open to either.
Just a point of clarification is, are you expecting to go to this other item for a short while or is it a long?
Forty-five.
That's forty-five. Probably staff preference that he didn't kind of bring this back.
I think it deserves a thorough discussion and I don't want to cut it short. And I apologize for that for you today, but at least we got through new information and I'll put it on some agenda as quickly as possible. Because I just think there's probably, like I already, I have most questions and I'm sure I'll listen to, and I just think we would do it justice if we tried to wrap it up quickly at the end of the day. Thank you. And we'll come back to it, council. Apologize for that. We've managed our time a little bit better. Did you reading your... Okay, so motion to close. By Council Ray, second by Council, I don't know if all those are there, both carriers.